A lot of items on the agenda, so we're going to go ahead and start on time at 6:30 PM. Welcome, everybody, to the Sibolo City Council meeting for May 13th, 2025. Thank you very much to everybody who came out here tonight in person to join us. We have a full council tonight. Councilwoman Cunningham will be a few minutes late, and so she will be here within the 15 minutes, so no reason to call for her absence. Councilman Mahoney, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Sure. Let's bow our heads, please. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for letting us be together tonight. Thank you for your protections and blessings on our community. We ask that you help us, guide us in the meeting tonight to do all things in a way that's pleasing to you. We ask these things in the name of our Savior, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
(inaudible)
All right, next up, we have a presentation of awards, and these are the presentation of the certificates of appreciation to members of the 2024-2025 Youth Council. And so what I'm going to do is read off the names for...
So, we want to do the four seniors first.
Okay.
And then, I guess it's going to have, because she certainly be...
Okay, the four seniors, all right.
Yes. So, she's the chairman.
Okay, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to announce the four seniors first. So come on up to the podium, and then we're going to take a picture, and I'll hand everybody their certificates at the same time. So Madison Gastal, welcome Madison. Wesley Jeffords, welcome Wesley. And we have Elijah Jones and Trey Lee Warren, and then the others.
These are the other ones.
Okay.
We want to do those first.
All right. Well, thanks to all of you for us serving. We're going to come on up and take a quick picture, and I'll give you the recognition plaques.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, four seniors, for participating in this inaugural Sibolo Youth Advisory Council that we have. We started in November. We accomplished a lot in just a few months' time, and you know what? I wish you all the best as you go on to the next journey in your life, and hopefully you learned a little bit of something from our youth council that you can take with you in your next steps. And I want to especially thank Madison and Wesley for being the chair and co-chair for our Sibolo Youth Council, and we look forward to building upon what y'all established for us. So, thank you very much.
Okay, so please stick around, and we're going to call the rest of the youth council members. Parker Gilman, come on up, Parker. Parker, okay. Next up is Genevieve Jones. Genevieve here tonight? Okay. Next up is India Kynes. India? India? Okay. All right, next up is Alex Garrard. Alex, welcome Alex. Is Brooke here tonight? Hey, Brooke. We have Danielle Hall.
Danielle.
Danielle Hall. Next up is Eli Mitchell. Eli? Nope. Okay. Next up is Janison...
Janison.
Janison Artis. Did I spell it wrong? Jason McGee. Jason? No, Jason? Okay. All right, next up is Nala Ashby. Nala?
And last is Leila Kynes.
No Leila? Okay. Actually, last is Michael Boyd. Michael? All right, well, we'll hand these out at the next youth council meeting to the folks that couldn't come tonight, so. Thank you all very much for serving on the Sibolo Youth Council. Let's take another group picture with everybody. Scoot on over. All right, well, thanks very much to all of you for participating in the Sibolo City Youth Council, so thank you all very much. I appreciate it. All right, next up, we have a proclamation for National Police Week, read by Councilman Mahoney.
Okay. A proclamation declaring May 11 through 17 as Police Week. Whereas there are approximately 800,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including dedicated members of the Sibolo Police Department, whereas since the first recorded death in 1786, more than 24,400 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty. And whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial in Washington, DC, and whereas 147 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial, including 19 Texas peace officers. And whereas, the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Fund's 37th Annual Candlelight Vigil on the evening of May 13, 2025, and whereas, the Candlelight Vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 11 through 17, and whereas, May 15 is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of all fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Allen, the mayor of Sibolo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, staff, and all the citizens of the city of Sibolo, do hereby proclaim May 11 through 17 as Police Week in Sibolo, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and in communities across the nation. In witness, I have heretofore set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Sibolo to be affixed, Mayor Mark Allen.
Hey, I just want to say to many of you all in the community, a lot of our men and women was last night, we attended our memorial service that we have for Shirk Sibolo. Thanks to the council, thanks to our community, we really appreciate this. I know our officers do, for all that they do, and obviously, this week is a very somber week for us, but additionally, just the opportunity to recognize our police officers across the nation, just not here in Sibolo. So, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. All right, next up is 6B, which is a proclamation for National Public Works Week, read by Councilwoman Donetta Roberts.
National Public Works Week proclamation, May 18 through the 24th, 2025, people, purpose, presence. Whereas, public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of Sibolo, Texas. And whereas, these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government, and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, and treatment solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities for our citizens. Whereas, it is the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Sibolo, Texas, to gain knowledge and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas, the year 2025 marks the 65th Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, and now therefore be it resolved, I, Mark Allen, mayor of Sibolo, Texas, on behalf of Sibolo City Council, staff, and all citizens, do hereby designate the week of May 18 through the 24th of 2025 as National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designated to pay tribute to our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees, and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. Can I just say one other thing? I actually had the pleasure of meeting with Director Julio Gomez and Frank Graham today, and they gave me a very in-depth process of the drainage system throughout the city of Sibolo, and everything that they do maintain, and I was just amazed, because I never realized how much our public works department, all of the departments within the public works facilities, actually do to maintain the city and keep it looking beautiful, and have the events that we have, and just be there for our citizens. So, I would like to thank every one of them.
Yeah, I just want to take a moment to thank council for giving us this proclamation. I always like to say that our public works guys were the young, sun heroes of the city. I always tell our guys that residents wake up in the morning, we make sure that the water's running, the light's running, the roads are safe, the parks are clean, and they do this every day with a smile on their face. They work hard every single day, and they go home to their families. So, this is more for our guys, and thank you all for recognizing them.
Thank you, Julio. All right, next up, we have 6C, which is a proclamation for Economic Development Week, read by Councilwoman Jeff McGlothlin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Proclamation recognizing Economic Development Week as May 12 through 16, 2025. Whereas, the International Economic Development Council is the largest professional economic development organization dedicated to serving economic developers, and whereas, the International Economic Development Council provides leadership and excellence in economic development for communities, members, and partners through conferences, training courses, advisory services, and research, in-depth publications, public policy advocacy, and initiatives such as the Accredited Economic Development Organization Program, the Certified Economic Development Designation, and the Entrepreneurship Development Professional. And whereas, economic developers promote economic well-being and the quality of life for their communities by creating, retaining, and expanding jobs to facilitate growth, enhance wealth, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas, the economic developers stimulate and incubate entrepreneurism in order to help establish the next generation of new business, which is the hallmark of the American economy. And whereas, economic developers are engaged in a wide variety of settings, including rural and urban, local, state, provincial, and federal governments, public-private partnerships, chambers of commerce, universities, and a variety of other institutions. And whereas, economic developers attract and retain high-quality jobs, develop vibrant communities, and improve the quality of life in their regions. Whereas, economic developers work in the city of Sibolo within the state of Texas. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Mark Allen, mayor of Sibolo, Texas, on behalf of the Sibolo City Council, staff, and all citizens, recognize the week of May 12 through 16, 2025, as Economic Development Week, and remind individuals of the importance of economic development, which supports expanding career opportunities and making lives better.
There was like 45 big words in there. All right, next up is D, Proclamation for Mental Health Awareness Month, read by Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
Proclamation designating May 2025 as Mental Health Awareness Month. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and addressing the mental health needs in Sibolo of children, youth, adults, seniors, and families is fundamental to having a healthy community. And whereas, all people experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and with the prevalence of mental health conditions in our nation, it is important for all members of the community to know that specific tools exist which can be used to better handle challenges and protect one's health and well-being. And whereas, prevention is an effective way to reduce the burden of mental health conditions, and with early and effective treatment, individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the importance of improving the mental health of all residents, and Sibolo is committed to raising awareness about mental illness, promoting effective community partnerships and collaborations to serve the mental health needs of our community, and increasing access to culturally and linguistically appropriate mental health services. And now therefore, Mayor Mark Allen, of the city of Sibolo, on behalf of the city council, staff, and all citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 in Sibolo as Mental Health Awareness Month, and encourage all citizens, businesses, organizations, and agencies to work collaboratively to reduce the stigma of mental illness and to increase the mental health of our community. And here to receive this proclamation is Ms. Barbara with the NAMI organization. If you can please come up. Thank you.
Yes, I'm Barbara Vincent, affiliate leader for NAMI Gualbey County, and I'd like to say, we have a huge festival this Saturday, May 17th, from 10 to 2:00. And like I said, I serve Gualbey County, everything we do, programming is free, education is free, family support groups, support groups for anyone with a mental health condition is free, and we're all volunteers, come out and see us and support us on Saturday. And this is my youngest volunteer, NAMI, she's six, and she started when she was four.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, next up is Agenda Item 6E, Proclamation for the Motorcycle Awareness Month, read by Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation designating May 2025 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month, whereas today's society finds more citizens involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, both for affordable transportation and recreation. And whereas, motorcyclists are less protected and therefore more prone to injury or death in a crash than other vehicle drivers. And whereas, campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike regarding motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risk, injuries, and most of all fatalities through the comprehensive approach of motorcycle safety. And whereas, it is in the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other motorist or vehicle traveling the highways of this country. And it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic laws and safety rules. And whereas, all citizens of our community need to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and motorists alike, to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. And now therefore, Mark Allen, mayor of Sibolo, on behalf of the Sibolo City Council, staff, and all citizens, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2025 is Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month in the city of Sibolo, Texas, and urge all residents to do their part to increase safety and awareness in our community.
Hey, everybody. Sorry about that. I usually talk loud enough, I don't need it. First of all, my name's Stephen Lumen, I'm the president of the New Braunfels Thin Blue Line Motorcycle Club. We're a law enforcement organization, we support fallen and injured police officers all over the state of Texas, and especially in our community. Just so you guys know, if you ever have an officer that needs assistance or help, or their family needs help, please reach out to us, that's what we're here for. But with that being said, I want to thank you very much for recognizing Motorcycle Awareness Month. On average, there's two motorcyclists killed every day in the state of Texas, and unfortunately, about three or four years ago, we lost four of our own, and then there was another family just last week, lost three of their own. So it's very important that people recognize and pay attention out there with motorcycles on the road, because we are out there, we're very prevalent in this area, there's a lot of riders out here, but we do again, appreciate your time and recognition. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lumen.
Thank you, Stephen.
All right, our next proclamation is Agenda Item 6F. It's the Proclamation for Community Action Month, read by Councilwoman Cunningham.
Whereas, the Community Council of South Central Texas, Inc., was established as a community action agency on May 11, 1965, and whereas, the service area encompasses the greater south-central and west-Texas counties of Atascosa, Banderas, Bee, Brewster, Comal, Crane, Culberson, Dimmitt, Edwards, Frio, Gillespie, Guadalupe, Hudson, Jeff Davis, Karnes, Kendall, Kerr, Kenny, LaSalle, Live Oak, Maverick, man, y'all just keep going, McMillan, Medina, Facos, Presidio, Real, Terrell, Uvalde, Valverde, Wilson, and Zavala. And whereas, the Community Council of South Central Texas is celebrating 60 years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Texans in greater south-central and west-Texas. And whereas, community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across this nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas, community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in 99% of all American counties. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action strategies and innovative solutions evolve as the needs of individuals, families, and communities in cities, suburbs, and rural areas change. And whereas, community action is experienced in advancing opportunities by coordinating federal, state, local, and private resources to achieve results for people and communities. And whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. Now therefore, I, Mark Allen, mayor of Sibolo, Texas, do hereby proclaim May 2025 as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all community action agencies.
Thank you, Katie. All right, so we have Ms. O'Neil and Ms. Flores. Come on down.
If you'd read 233 more, you would've got all of the state of Texas.
Yes. Hello, Mayor, Council. Thank you so much for having us today. My name is, okay, I got abandoned. Okay. My name is Neel Flores. I'm the Marketing and Communications Manager for Community Council of South Central Texas. With me today is Ms. Holly O'Neal, our Administrative Assistant. And we would like to say, on behalf of our Executive Director, Mr. Bobby Dikey, and our Board of Directors, we'd like to thank you for the proclamation today. And we would like everybody here to join us in celebrating 60 wonderful years of serving our community in south central and west Texas. Thank you so much. Have a great night.
All right. Next up, we have Citizens to Be Heard. This is the only time during the city council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is an opportunity for visitors and guests to address the city council on any issue, to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The city council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. Attorney General Opinion, J.C. 0169, limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee, including city staff. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is live-streamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the City of Sibolo or on an agenda item and have this item read at the meeting, please email citiesecretary@sibolotx.gov or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 p.m., the date of the meeting. So we have several people signed up to speak here tonight. I'm going to call our first guest, Maggie Tinnerington. Welcome, Maggie.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Chief Andres, I just wanted to say, it was such a beautiful ceremony last night, the police memorial between you and the City of Shirts. I mean, it's always touching. It was just so well-done. And just wanted to thank you again for inviting us to join you in that. Tomorrow, 2:00 p.m., another new Sibolo business that we're welcoming with a ribbon-cutting. It's bio-work, so if you are available to come, would love to see you out there at 2:00 p.m. They're very, very excited about being in Sibolo. Also next Tuesday, today's the last day to RSVP to attend. That is our Techstot luncheon. I'm sure we all have a lot of things to discuss with Techstot when they're out there about where they are in the progress with the projects and the things that are going on. We are once again almost sold out, so if you have not RSVP, this is the last night to do it. It's going to be another full luncheon. And last, the City of Shirts is hosting both the memorial and the veterans ceremonies this year. Sibolo did such a great job, so the bar's kind of like right here now. So for the Memorial Day Ceremony, it is May 26, 9:00 a.m. at the Veterans Memorial Plaza in Shirts. So I'm sure you all have already received an email of an invitation. So hopefully you all will be able to attend that. And that's all we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Next up is Miguel Campos. Miguel?
Sorry, hobbling up here.
Ah, welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Miguel Campos. I'm the founder of the Buffalo Knights FC nonprofit soccer club that's here locally in Sibolo. And the name Buffalo Knights comes from our high schools, you know, Clemens and also Steel. So very local to us. We're an organization. I'm a United States Marine veteran and a Sibolo resident for over 10 years. We've applied for the Strategic Partnership Grant, and I wanted to let you know just a little bit about our organization. So when we first came to Sibolo, we had my boys, I have four boys that participated with the YMCA, and we had a great time there. And my older boys eventually went up and started playing select soccer. And as my younger son started to want to join, and my middle son as well, we noticed that the competition level at some of the lower-cost soccer leagues did not have the competition we were looking for. And then the soccer teams that did were very overpriced. So we wanted to start a nonprofit organization to be able to kind of settle both, where we have competitive capability as well as low budget for some families and make it available for all the kids that are out there. We serve over 80 kids in the Sibolo community, and we have seven teams serving ages 3 to 15 currently. And our motto is competition, integrity, and community. We do this to help foster technical skills, but allow for the kids to be part of something bigger. This helps with their self-esteem, benefits the community by building strong connections with the relationships with local families and businesses. And we promote active lifestyles by providing youth sports opportunities to participate in regardless of your family's financial situations. We really look forward to creating a great partnership with Sibolo and impacting the community, and especially for the families and the kids. So we appreciate your time and consideration for the grant. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Miguel. Next up is Chris Harper. Welcome, Chris.
Good evening. I'm here for the Court of Leadership class in the Chamber of Commerce, so just wanted to say hi and just let you know I'm here to observe. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Thanks for being here. Next up is Miguel, Miguel, I'm sorry, Vasquez. Welcome, Miguel.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. I'm very happy to be here this evening because it's 102 degrees outside, okay? Well, I'm here to extend an invitation to you for a talk, lecture, discussion that we'll be having next week as part of National Preservation History Month. And we'll be having it over at the Good Shepherd Church. And the topic of discussion will be the relationship of the initial farmworkers that came to this area and the relationship with the first church in Shirts, which was the Immaculate Conception Church out on 78. You may not know about that church, but that's what we'll be talking about. And, well, we've all learned that Stephen F. Austin is the father of Texas, but Stephen never made it here to the Sibolo Valley. So who did make it here to the Sibolo Valley were Germans, because the Republic of Texas, followed by the State of Texas, put out a call to people to come to Texas because of the beautiful land that we have, and it was cheap. And if you're a farmer and, you know, you work the land for five years, the land is yours, okay? So there was an immigration from Germany which came here, settled a lot of this area right in here. And subsequent to that, around early 1900s, there was a second immigration wave that came from Mexico. At that time, they were fleeing the Mexican Revolution and Pancho Villa, so they didn't want to have anything to do with that. And luckily for them, they were able to find work here in the valley picking cotton. So we're going to discuss all of that. And there's actually people that were associated with Immaculate Conception early on. Just as a spoiler alert, Immaculate Conception then became Church of the Good Shepherd, okay? So that'll be next Saturday. You have the invitation there for you, so would love to see you there. Thanks.
Thank you, Miguel. Next up, well, we had Malcolm McLachlan. I think he had to leave, though. Let's see Malcolm. Skip him. Next up is, is it Chaney Wallace or Waller? I'm sorry, I'm doing a terrible job saying your name. Is it Chaney? C-H-E-N-Y? Chaney? Okay. Welcome, Chaney.
Good evening. My name's Chaney Walker. I am a participant of the Chamber of Leadership program, and I'm just here to observe. Thank you.
Thank you, Chaney. Welcome. Thanks for being here. All right. Next up is Shane Sonor. Welcome, Shane.
Thanks, Mayor. My name is Shane Seider. I am with the Leadership Corps with the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm just here to observe.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Thank you, Shane. All right. Next up, we have four emails read by the City Secretary Office. For, you going to read them, Valerie? Okay.
The first one is from Rance McDaniel. Dear Mayor Allen and City Council, I am writing to express my concerns on what seems to be a developing trend on how council is conducting its business during open session. I did a quick look-up for the definition of the word professional, exhibiting a courteous, conscientious, and generally business-like manner in the workplace, according to Merriam-Webster Dictionary. As someone who regularly watches the council meetings via the YouTube channel, I cannot say I would use that adjective to describe a growing trend of behavior. During the April 22 meeting, timestamp 2:46, Mayor Allen reads Agenda Item 13I regarding a public hearing on express violations of city charter. This was Ms. Sanchez Stevens' agenda item. Then for the next 13 minutes, the public is treated to a list of allegations against Mayor Allen. This is not the first time I have witnessed what appears to be a contentious exchange between these two elected officials. The meeting breaks to executive session for another 30 minutes to follow. Since the public is not privy to this discussion, I can only assume, with the context preceding the break, that the following discussion was focused on Ms. Sanchez Stevens' agenda item. The motion was voted down 5 to 2. By my rough math, this is around 50 minutes of time out of a four-hour meeting. So for even numbers, let's just say about 20% of the time allotted was for this agenda item. You have the mayor, council staff, and contracted resources tied up on this one item. I would also hazard a guess that a fair amount of time has been spent on this before now. I would like to call out another couple of definitions I would cite as relevant here. Opportunity cost: the cost of an opportunity foregone and the loss of the benefits that could be received from that opportunity, the most valuable foregone alternative. Optics: the aspects of an action policy or decision, as in politics or business, that relate to public perceptions. In this city's opinion, this looks like personal beef between Ms. Sanchez Stevens and Mr. Allen, which at varying points has brought in other council members to chime in as well. I don't know the entire background or the motivation behind the repeated spats often initiated by Ms. Sanchez Stevens, but what I can say is this appears to be a complete waste of time. Refer to the definition of opportunity cost. Is this the most important city business that needs to be addressed? Is this the best use of time? Four hours is not uncommon for these meetings to run, and I can't remember the last time an agenda was run from top to bottom. This is not how a professional organization functions. This reflects very poorly on the city as a whole. If leadership exhibits these unprofessional behaviors in the public, what kind of message do you think that sends to staff and to the public? Do you think that is good for employee retention and recruitment? Do you think members of the public like me come away from these meetings saying, "My government is certainly working with the public's best interests"? Please keep these words and definitions at the top of mind and get back to business. Meetings should be more professional and less circus-like. Regards, Rance McDaniel. The next one is from, I'm not sure if it's Wilson Lindsey or Lindsey Wilson, Wilson Lindsey. Hello, my name is Wilson Lindsey, and I recently moved to the beautiful Sibolo from Germany. I find that morning traffic leaving my subdivision on rodeo weight is difficult to navigate. There are two lanes leading out of the area. The left turn is left turn only, the left lane is left turn only, and the right lane is straight to Steel High School or right. The left lane is rarely occupied, while the right lane is normally backed up all the way into the subdivision. If the right lane was made to be right turn only and the left lane was straight and left, it would, in my opinion, alleviate the bottleneck at the intersection. Thank you for your time. The name was Wilson Lindsey. Next one is from Luis Gonzalez. Dear City Council members, I am writing to express my concern and disappointment regarding the newly constructed bulletin board placed directly in front of the facade of City Hall. Who is the genius that approved placing this monstrosity right in front of one of our city's most important buildings? City Hall should stand as a proud symbol of leadership and civic identity. Instead, this oversized, poorly-placed structure now dominates the entrance, obstructing the architectural character and visual integrity of the building. It's baffling that such an eyesore was approved in what should be a welcoming and dignified public space. Surely, there were more appropriate locations for this board, ones that would not block the front of our civic centerpiece. I respectfully urge the council to reconsider this decision and explore options to relocate the bulletin board to a more suitable and less intrusive location. Respectfully, Luis.
And real quick, before we move on, what was the name again?
On this one?
Yeah.
Luis Gonzalez.
Oh, Luis, okay. And then just a factual response, that was actually donated to us by one of our contractor, but they were gracious enough to donate that to us. Thank you.
Okay. The last one is from Anita Weaver. I would like to respectfully request that you approve the waiver as necessary to allow Grampy's Pizzeria to lawfully obtain their liquor license. Their business is located in Sibolo at 121 Sibolo Commons, Suite 101, which is across the street from a high school. I understand this violates the current restrictions. However, the business is family-owned, family-oriented, and family-operated with a high degree of responsibility and maturity. We have been going to Grampy's at least weekly shortly after their opening, and I believe they bring a great product to Sibolo. Their success and popularity will continue to rise because of their family-friendly environment as well as their delicious meals. But their ability to serve beer and wine will bring more opportunities to the city to celebrate this unique and wonderful restaurant. Thank you for your consideration. Anita Weaver.
Thank you. Next up is Brooke Merritt. Welcome, Brooke. Ms. Sibolo, Brooke Merritt, welcome.
Hello, Mr. Mayor. Hello, City Council, and hello, city staff. This is the last week that I can say that I'm going to be your Ms. Sibolo. This Sunday, we're having our pageant, and I just wanted to express how grateful I am for this opportunity to serve and represent my community and tell you how much of an impact it's made on my life. It's truly helped me and grown me as a person. The previous Ms. Sibolo, the one that I competed in, there were 13 girls that competed in the pageant. And there's been tremendous growth this year with 29 girls competing in the pageant. I just wanted to thank you so much for the opportunity and for granting us the money to be able to fund the scholarships for the winners of the pageant. And thank you so much again, and express my hope that next year for the following pageants, you will be funding the scholarships. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, Brooke. I appreciate you. And thank you for everything you do, and thank you for serving us, Ms. Sibolo, and all of the tremendous achievements that you've accomplished. I'm really proud of you, Brooke. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Next up is Item 8, Consent Agenda. All items listed below are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests, in which case, the item will be removed from the consent agenda. Item A is Approval of the Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting Held on April 22, 2025. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion and a second. Please vote on your screens. Motion carries 6 to 1. Next up is Staff Update. We have Administration Capital Improvement Program, which includes the Lower Seguin Road, Dean Road, Bolton Road, Green Valley Road, Low Water Crossing Improvement, the Animal Services Facility, the Public Safety Facility, Hickerville Road, and Town Creek Drainage, as well as the 2025 Street Rehab Packages 1 and 2, Town Creek Trail, Tolly Road, FM 1103 Phase 1 and 2, as well as updates on our RFPs, RFQs, RFBs, and ITBs, as well as our Strategic Partnership Grant Applications Update. Mr. Reed?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council members. I've already prepared my email, so everything I'm saying, I'm going to hit send as soon as I'm done. So I'd like to update you on the multipurpose Event Center Field Restoration. You'll remember on April 5, you directed staff to proceed with the restoration of the sod and repair to the irrigation system. I'm happy to say that that was advertised on May 3 and 10. That's in the newspaper. We had a We had a pre-bid on May 12th. The bid opening is May 30th, so end of this month, we'll have those bids. And then we do have under construction the Street Rehabilitation Package Number 1. That's Deer Creek Boulevard. If you've driven by Deer Creek Boulevard on Sibolo Valley Drive or have had to drive up Deer Creek Boulevard, you'll notice a lot of traffic control there. So our contractor is starting that project, and that will proceed here shortly. Still waiting on the Green Valley Road 1 and 2. These will be phased, meaning they'll work on Deer Creek Boulevard and then move over to Green Valley Road 1 and Number 2. And then we do have the Package Number 2. There is a pre-bid meeting this week, two days from now, May 15th, and then the bid opening is June 10th. Remember, that includes Town Creek Road, Firebird Run, Silverwing. The trailhead parking lot at HEB. The final walkthrough is scheduled for the coming weeks, but if you were to look at it, it looks complete to the average person, not the technical inspector. And then Green Valley Water Main Extension, it's 90% done. All the water line has been installed. The remaining items include pressure testing and back T sampling. So that's just making sure that the water system is correctly installed and the water is good, not contaminated. FM 78 Water Main Extension, this is Buffalo Place to Shady Meadows. So what I'm talking about is a portion of FM 78 going to shirts. So from FM 1103, where it intersects where QT is, towards shirts. Text Dot has approved the right-of-way permit. Notice to proceed is for May 27th. The project is estimated to be completed in six months. So you're not going to see anything on the ground. They will start construction in the very near future. And I skipped over a lot of projects because you'll see in my email, no updates on those items. And then we have a lot going on regarding requests for proposals, qualifications, bids, and so forth. We have the City of Sibolo Business and Event Center, often called the Noble Group Event Center. That is out for bids. It's closing two days from now, May 15th. The City Attorney Services close May 16th, so this week. And we will be bringing that to you in the very near future to start your review of all the proposals that are received. The Multi-Event Center Field Restoration, I've already talked about that one, being that it closes on May 30th. The Street Rehabilitation Package Number 2, I've already mentioned, that closes on June 10th. We have the following items currently under review by an evaluation committee. So the Utility Rate Study, and so that's for water and wastewater. So we're having reviews of those proposals right now, and we expect something to be in front of council in June. We also have the Animal Services Facility Design Consulting. So we interviewed three firms. I was not in that. We had staff interviewing three firms. We will be bringing to you a recommendation to award a contract to one of those firms in June, so next month. And then the Consultant to provide on-call Economic Development Services, we have that on your agenda for May 27th. And that's kind of like we've done with on-call engineering, where you have, I call it horses in the stable. You have an engineer that's really good at drainage. You have an engineer that's really good at roads. On-call Economic Development Consultants, we may have one that's really good at recruiting retail. We may have another one that's really good at market studies. And so Clancy and Rick have worked really hard to advance that through the Economic Development Corporation. They've made the recommendation, and we're seeking your approval of those master service agreements, if you will, with those consultants. And that's everything that I have. And as far as the Strategic Partnership Grants, I'll look to Brian. He can add to anything I say. We have 14 applications. Your work is cut out for you. A great problem to have is that something grows to be so successful that you have more demand than you have supply. So 14 applications were submitted this year. Brian Huggins is bringing those applications to council at your next meeting. That begins your review. You're not necessarily making a decision May 27th. You're going to take all those 14 applications back with you. I would suspect if you direct Brian to bring that back at your first meeting in June for you to make a decision, then you'll make your decision in June on how to allocate your limited funds to 14 applications. That's all. And again, all this is in an email. I'm going to hit send here in just a minute.
Okay, Councilman Hicks has a question, and then Councilwoman Cunningham.
Bolton Road East. Everything that we have put into that road for Ison, I've noticed the last couple of times I've gone out to Commissioner's Court, which I noticed today, we're starting to get some pretty severe cracks. And I bring this up because we need to either get somebody to go in there and seal them with some tar because we've got, I know of two developments I see them working on out there. So we're going to start having heavy trucks on that road. And they're going to impact, they're going to impact it, and then we're going to have to be replacing that road before, you know, it's only been six, seven years it's been open, and here we are. We're going to have to be replacing it because of outside ETJ developments going in.
Yes, sir.
So we need to get on top of that. And there's a couple of dips in there as well. So it's starting to fail already.
Mr. Gomez will make sure that we have a street crew go out there, put crack seal down as appropriate. And like all roads, we are monitoring those roads, and we'll keep a close eye on that, Mr. Reed.
And in the potholes, I know that I mentioned it to you.
Yes, sir.
After our tour of CCMA, there's lots of potholes on Hickerville. Wild. But if we can get those looked at as well.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Cunningham.
Yes, so first question, the EDC on-call. I was contacted by another small business that is going to be leaving Sibolo today. They expressed that they had reached out to our Economic Development Department several times in that while they got a lot of emails about events and things, the support that they needed was more financial. They needed to be able to do some updates, and the only assistance they felt they got was for cosmetic and not what they really needed. So with that on-call EDC, is there a way to get someone on-call who can help us increase our small business retention and kind of help us tailor that? The economy's just going to continue to get harder for these small businesses. I want to make sure that we're keeping them. In the last year, we've seen Act Shack, Saladin Go, this business that I'm talking about. There's five or six businesses in the last few months that have really struggled. So I want to make sure that we're doing what we can to be proactive, reaching out to these small businesses and making sure that we're getting them. And if that's something that can be put in this on-call EDC packet, then that may be something that we can use.
And Ms. Cunningham, Mr. Vasquez may want to respond, but these contracts provide no concrete work to be performed. It will be performed by a task order that's issued in the future when a scope is written and costs are agreed to. I'll let Rick speak to if there's a consultant that could play a role in small business retention.
So in terms of small business retention, the EDC is working on a new small business assistance program that'll provide a matching grant up to $15,000 for minor repairs and replacement of code-compliant items as well as startup costs. So I think council will be seeing that program implemented in the next 90, 60 to 90 days. That will help us with small business retention. The consultants are available on-call. We think we have in-house capacity to deal with the small business assistance. If it's planning or development-related or construction-related, we can help them internally. We don't think we need to use a consultant for that, but we'll be glad to reach out to this individual business if we get the contact information.
I may reach out to you separately about this through Mr. Reed to see if I can better explain myself. I know that this particular business that reached out to me today, their property taxes have increased considerably. They've reached out to the city for assistance with helping them find other grants they may qualify, and they felt like they were just facing roadblocks. Well, you don't qualify for anything. And they're like, "Well?" So now they've been in Sibolo for 10 years, and they're going to be selling off. So I just want to make sure that with small businesses struggling and the potential for even more struggling, that we're proactive. And if one of these consultants was able to do that type of assistance, either, I don't know. But I'll reach out.
Okay.
Thank you so much. And my second question, the water main break on 1103 today, the geyser. Have I gotten any word from Text Dot? Is that going to cause any delays? Please say no.
I'll let Julio Gomez respond. I'm not going to even conjecture.
Yes, so our staff went out there this morning. That was a transmission main that was hit. Nobody was affected by it, but our staff did make it on-site and made the repairs to it. Currently, right now, we're just clearing out the line, making sure there's no air in it before we put it back in service. But we did make the repairs out there, and we tracked material costs and everything so that way we can do what we need to on our end for that.
But no word on delays or anything as a result?
Ms. Cunningham, I'll send an email to Will Lockett right now and ask him if that will have an impact.
Thank you. We all were very nervous when we saw that.
Yep. Okay, and then I just have one more question, Mr. Reed. About, I know you had an update about the bid that closes on June 10th, and that will include Town Creek, Silverwing, Firebird Run. Does it also include Deer Creek and then Green Valley Road? I just wanted to clear that up with you.
No, sir. Deer Creek and Green Valley Road 1 and 2 sections are already, they're part of Package 1.
Packet 1, okay.
And what I spoke to earlier is Deer Creek Boulevard is already under construction. They put up the traffic control.
Okay.
At some point, as they make progress on Deer Creek Boulevard, they'll move over to Green Valley Road 1 and 2 so that they're moving efficiently with the different mobilization of equipment and labor. So that's already done. It's awarded. They're starting on Deer Creek right now.
Got it. Okay, and so it's Town Creek, Silverwing, and Firebird Run are the three that's included in Packet 2?
Packet 2, yes, sir.
Okay, got it. Thank you, sir.
And if I can say, those are the three that have, they are rebuilds. They are not a mill and overlay. Is that correct, Mr. Gomez?
The only project on that one that's a mill and overlay is Silverwing.
Silverwing, so Silverwing is. Firebird Run and Town Creek are complete rebuilds.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is the, are we going to do the quarterly report for the C Click Fix with Tracy? Welcome, Tracy. Do you have a presentation on that one?
No, sir, there's no presentation. It's just the graphs in your packet. The graphs in this quarter cover February, March, and April. And I'm just here to answer any questions, if y'all have any.
Thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions on C Click Fix? Okay, well, thank you, Tracy, for supporting that invaluable application. I think it's really helpful. Thank you. All right, next up is, well, 10A has been pulled by the applicant, and so we're going to move that to the next meeting in May. And so on that one, we're not going to have, yeah, we're just going to have the, did you have an update on that, Peggy?
Yes, sir. It will not go back to the council until the second meeting in June.
Second meeting in June, okay, thank you.
Which is June 24th, where y'all hear the public hearing and the ordinance at the same time.
That's right. I know you called me on that earlier. I couldn't remember which meeting. Okay, thank you. So second meeting in June for that one. It has to be re-advertised in the newspaper. And then when we do that one, we're just going to do the public hearing and the vote on the same night. All right, moving on to 10B, Approval Disapproval of an Ordinance by the City Council of the City of Sibolo, Guadalupe County, Texas, Providing for the Second Amendment of the Budget for the Fiscal Year 2425. Ms. Miranda.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you tonight is consideration of an ordinance authorizing the Second Budget Amendment for fiscal year 25. The First Budget Amendment was approved by council at the January 28 meeting. This Second Budget Amendment includes three funds. The General Fund, the Grant Fund, and the Parkland Fees Fund. In the General Fund, on Exhibit A, there are three adjustments. The first adjustment, or A, is an increase of $5,000 for a traffic count study for everyday weigh in Sibolo Valley Drive per direction given by council at the January 28 City Council Meeting. Item B is an increase of $26,200 for our share of Guadalupe Appraisal District Budget, which was increased after City Council adopted the budget last August. The third item is a decrease of $49,500 to reallocate a portion of the victim services coordinator personnel costs to the Grant Fund for the second-year funding that we were awarded. On the next page is the Grants Fund. It's in landscape. We are making adjustments for five grants that were awarded this year. The largest of that was the MVCPA grant for $525,000 for two police officers, a crime analyst, and related equipment. The cybersecurity grant award for $155,000. The Victims Liaison Grant Award for $65,000 for a portion of the victim services coordinator personnel costs, which was moved from the General Fund and related supplies and travel. A SHIELD Project Grant Award for $81,700. The NRA Grant Award of $2,300 for rifle and ammunition. And on the following page is the Parkland Fees Fund. The final adjustment is to carry forward funding for the Town Creek Trail Project from the prior year, which was not expended. Staff, of course, recommends approval of the ordinance for the Second Budget Amendment. Appreciate your consideration. Are there any questions on any of the items in the amendment?
I think, Ms. Miranda, if I may, the only question that I have is, I guess in just reviewing the Grant Revenue Fund, it's, I guess it's just unusual. I haven't seen a transfer from our General Fund into a Grant Fund. I guess just in my mind, I would think that the Grant Funds would go into the General Fund to help different departments. So when I see the $49,500 coming out of the General Fund to go for a victim services, oh, relocated from the Victim Services Coordinator for a victim's liaison portion in the Grant Fund, I'm just a little bit confused as to.
It is actually a reduction, not an increase. So it's moving the cost of that position into the Grant Fund so that we can account for it separately in the Grant Fund. So it's not a transfer from the General Fund to the Grant Fund, but more shifting the cost from the General Fund to the Grant Fund. So reducing the cost in the General Fund for that position.
The cost in terms of the salary itself?
Yes.
The salary?
The salary and some fringe. It doesn't pay for the full position, but for a portion of the position.
Do these positions have to remain in that Grant Fund the entire time of the existence of those positions?
No. It's only for the portion of the salary that is funded by the grants. And that's just so we can keep that accounting separate so that when, you know, if a grantor asks for records or copies under like a desk review or an audit of the grant, all of that is in a separate fund and accounted for in a separate fund. So for as long as the position is grant-funded, for the portion that is grant-funded, it would be in the Grant Fund.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to approve 10B.
Got a motion and a second. Please vote on your screens. Thank you, Ms. Miranda.
Thank you.
All right, motion carries, five to two. Next up is Item 10C, Approval Disapproval of an Ordinance Granting a Franchise Agreement Between the City of Sibolo, Texas and Waste Connections of Texas LLC, DBA, Vaquero, An Exclusive Franchise Agreement For the Collection, Transportation, And Disposal of Municipal Solid Waste and Recyclable Materials in the City of Sibolo, Texas, Prescribing the Terms, Conditions, Fees, Obligations, and Limitations To Occupy Public Property With Such Franchise Shall Be Exercised, Providing for a Five-Year Term and One-Five-Year Extension Term, And Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Franchise Agreement. Mr. Reed.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Give me one second, or good, someone else is doing that for me. Before I begin the presentation, I just want to take a moment to recognize the many staff members who contributed mightily to bringing this before you tonight. to bringing this before you tonight. I also want to recognize the Waste Connections representatives who are here, and I'll just point to them, and if council would like, they can come up and say a few words and officially introduce themselves. So I'd like to start off with Lily Samuelson. She's our procurement manager. I don't know if Lily is here tonight. She's done an awesome job, and every time I give you an update on RFPs, ITBs, and all that, Lily's the one that makes sure that staff has the support from her to use the right documents, to procure for goods and services in the best way so that we're wisely using taxpayer dollars, and she does just a great job of helping everybody through the process. We have Maggie Patterson, our utility billing manager. She is here. If Maggie wants to raise her hand. You know, Maggie's been here for how many years, Maggie? Seventeen years. And up until now, the utility billing area has been responsible for all the billing, for solid waste and recycling, for taking the calls for solid waste and recycling and related calls. And so she has this in-depth knowledge of how things work day to day, and so she brought that to the selection team, the evaluation team. We have Anna Miranda, our finance director, who was critical in us looking at the numbers and also with her knowledge of solid waste, the way that it's worked here, giving us insight. Brian Huggins, our executive director, was instrumental in giving us perspective and helping with the evaluation, and throughout the process being present. We also had Julio Gomez, who joined the process late, so I'd just like to recognize our public works director for jumping on the team. Am I missing anybody? Okay. And then we have in the audience, we have two members from Solid Waste, Jason Rowe and Zachary Ryan. They'll introduce themselves later if you'd like them to step up and say a few words. So council, you've had this packet. What I do not plan on doing is reading every slide. But as we finalized the agreement, I thought, you know, for seven years, I'm looking at Anna Miranda, we've not increased solid waste rates. And so we have this old franchise agreement for solid waste and recycling that was from a local company called Bear Waste back in 2005, roughly. And that agreement was really simple and had terms that you won't find in the industry today. One term is that the City Council had unilateral authority to say yes to rate increases or to say no. Well, since 2019, the council said no. And so there are increases in our rates. And that was also true for a neighboring community that had the same original franchise agreement with Bear Waste, and they had to go through this process just in the past month. And so I thought, I'll focus on some of the provisions around rates and service delivery, because I think when we walk through this, you're going to find that the City of Sibolo and the City Council, the direction you gave us, was that you have created a new franchise agreement that provides an enhanced level of service over what we have been doing. And there are some changes, and there may be some changes that some families say, well, that's not better for me. But you balanced the interest of the whole community when you gave us this direction. So let me begin. The action that you'll take tonight is to consider an ordinance to approve a franchise agreement, as stated here, for a five-year term with one five-year term extension. The City of Sibolo City Charter restricts franchise agreements to 10 years, so you cannot give a 20-year agreement. And that's what the original one was. And so you are restricted by your city charter in giving 10 years. That is what you're focused on here tonight. I won't go over this. This is really for the general public. If they looked at the packet and they wanted to know, how in the world did we get here? This is how we got here back from 2006 to present. These are key dates. You have seen this multiple times. Unless you want me to stop and you want to talk about one of them, I'm moving on. I do want to say July 28th is that pivotal date. That is when new service will begin. And the franchise agreement ends on July 28th, and that's why there's a transition on that day. Back in January, you had Lynn Landtrip. You were, you had the pleasure of meeting that gentleman, that stately gentleman, who gave you a presentation on everything solid waste, and he shared with us his 30 years of experience, and he talked about best value, driving best value in seeking a new solid waste and recycling service provider. And these were the scoring criteria that you agreed to that night. It drove the proposals that went out, our request for proposals, the actual proposals we received, and staff's evaluation committee evaluation of the ones that we received. And this again is what you heard from Lynn Landtrip, total cost of the contract and seeking best value for these services. And so we received five proposals. At the top, you see the five companies. But what, the companies that rose to the top that were asked to come in for interviews were Waste Connections, Republic Services, and Frontier Solutions. All three respondents were interviewed on April 2nd by the Evaluation Committee. As we previously shared with you, these are some of the things that stood out about Waste Connections that, in addition to its lower cost, made this the preferred vendor in staff's opinion and as we presented to council previously. So here's how the three compared on their best and final offer for the option that we're going with. So we asked for best and final with the solid waste connection, once a week, recycling once every other week, and the recycling collection one every other week with bulk and brush once every other week. So that second row was the one that you leaned on, along with household hazardous waste. And you said, but you want the option for recycling once a week, and we did seek that from Waste Connections. And that is what the contract says. So what council's considering is a franchise agreement that is solid waste pickup once a week, recycling once a week, brush and bulk pickup once every two weeks, household hazardous waste that is at the curb, and when I say at the curb, it's at your house. So we will not be doing the spring and fall cleanup in the City Hall parking lot in the future, because we each get brush and bulk pickup every two weeks. So that means, and it's three cubic yards, that means if you were to take three of your washing machines at home and have, if you took your washing machine, not the three that you have, if you took the one washing machine you had and multiplied it by three, when you put those side by side, that comes up with three cubic yards. So every two weeks, if you have a sofa you want to get rid of, put it out. If you have a mattress you need to get rid of, put it out. You have a hot water heater, I had to do one recently, put it out at the curb, and it will get picked up. If you're cutting trees down, and I know Mayor Allen was really proud when he was able to cut some twigs and put it out at the curb. He was darn determined to use our city chipper service in the Turning Stone neighborhood. And I say that with light humor, Mayor, not to make fun of you, but to say, we have some neighborhoods that could barely use our chipper service, and others like Deer Creek, I live in Deer Creek, I have six oak trees in my yard, and I'm cutting branches every other season. You were able to cut those trees, your bushes, put those out, three cubic yards, every two weeks. And that's why we will not be doing the spring and fall cleanup in the City Hall parking lot. And because household hazardous waste is at the curb, at your house, we will not do the twice-a-year HHW events at the City Hall. You now have the convenience of calling one number, describing what you want in household hazardous waste. And let's just say you have 15 cans of paint, and you haven't painted your house in five years. They're all dry, and you're just like, I don't know what to do with them. Well, now you call one number. You tell them what you have. They tell you that they will deliver a package. You'll put in the package, leave it outside your house, and they'll tell you what date they will pick it up. And that's all you do. You don't have to put it in your car, drive to City Hall in one or two days every year. You get to do that once every 60 days. Now, the one thing that we are not doing, because council looked at the cost, is we are not doing twice-a-week service, not during the summer or all year. We did ask, because you asked us, what would it cost? It was just over $9 more a month for every household if we were to do that citywide. But the cost for those one in four homes that need it twice a week, just to rent a cart, is $7. So council said, if families need two garbage containers every week, they can add $7 by asking for a second cart. So that's really, the only difference is that we're not doing twice-a-week pickup in the summer for three months. I'm going to repeat this at the end. We are getting twice-a-week pickup through July 25th. But on July 28th, for the rest of the summer, it's once-a-week solid waste pickup. And I told you before that the city has not increased its solid waste rates because our franchise agreement gave council the unilateral authority to say yes or no to those. And this chart is just showing that. It also shows, well, what if there's a 3% annual increase to rates? And that's what is shown in that kind of yellowish color, and that over the years, we would have been at $20.41. It also shows the chipper service. The last column is where we are with Waste Connections. And so while there is an increase over our current rate, when you look at the seven years of no increase, it's really in line with where we would be with enhanced levels of service. The commercial rates are located at the end of the franchise agreement. There are so many options there. I don't want to spend a lot of time on that, but if council has any questions, myself, Maggie Patterson, someone else on the evaluation team, or Waste Connection representatives can speak to you about this. I do want to say that there's going to be a focus and a letter sent to every commercial customer, letting them know of this transition, should you approve this franchise agreement tonight. And our goal is to inform those customers of the upcoming change, showing the rates, and that there will be outreach to them to make sure that they understand how their new commercial dumpster, whatever size configuration it is, will be delivered. I also want to highlight that because we have a unique Old Town, that we will visit each and every Old Town business in person, and Waste Connection has committed to making sure that we talk to them about what it looks like today and what we can do for them under this contract. And so we have specialized rates for small commercial, and I did put that on this chart. It's not only for Old Town, but it will be something used in Old Town quite a bit because of the lack of having an area where you can have a roll-off dumpster or a front-load dumpster. And so those are the rates for solid waste, one time a week, two times a week, or three times a week. And those are rates that recognize they're using a 95-gallon cart rather than a two-yard, three-yard, four-yard type of dumpster. All right. Everyone gets a free cart. You get a free recycling cart. You get a free garbage cart. If your cart is lost or stolen, it'll be replaced for a $75 fee. There is a chip in every single one of these, so they know where they're at. Yes, sir, Mr. Hicks?
Well, that's what I was going to ask. I like that there's going to be a chip in it, but is it going to be all right if we mark our carts underneath the lid saying 203 Lamar with the...
You do that, sir.
Okay.
The trucks are equipped with GPS tracking. Later on, there's a slide, which you have already peeked at, I'm sure, and they have a mobile app. I'd love for them to talk about that mobile app. But let's just say you did not put the carts out at night, and you're like, ah, I missed it. You open up your mobile app, and it'll show you where your garbage truck is. And you'll go, ah, I didn't miss it, and you can go ahead and put your cart out in the morning. Let's just say you need requests for certain types of services. You can use that mobile app. Again, I'm not the expert. I do have a slide on it. Zachary or Jason, when they come up, can speak to that. I think that's just where the industry is today, and you're getting it for the first time through Waste Connections. The customer communications and complaints will be handled directly by Waste Connections. You asked us, would there be a price break if we continue to handle customer service, or would there not be? And if there's not one, what's that customer service level look like? In best and final offers, there was zero difference if we continued to use our staff versus letting their already established customer care centers take it over. So Waste Connections will be providing that through their customer care center. If you have any questions about that, they are happy to answer that question. In our contract, we require monitoring by staff with daily, weekly, and monthly reports. So while Maggie Patterson's not, Patterson's not taking those calls, she'll, along with others, be getting these reports. She's going to read through them. If there's something of concern or a note, she's going to follow up with Waste Connections. She'll elevate it appropriately in the staff. And we have the ability to audit reports, and that's under the record-keeping and inspection article 14. Modification of rates. So the rates that you adopt with this franchise agreement, should you approve the ordinance, will be good through August 1, 2026. Thereafter, annually, on the first day of each agreement year, the contractor may adjust the base rates, subject to the following. So they have to give us notice, no later than June 1st, prior to the effective annual adjustment. And essentially, that's the one that rules versus the fifth business day after the publication of the CPI. So they're going to give us notice, and it's really based upon that CPI. And that CPI measures a variety of things from labor, fuel, and industry costs. I hope I described that okay, guys? The CPI adjustment, labor, fuel, other related costs that you have in your business. And it's based upon, as you see at the bottom of this page, the CPI for the 12-month period ending on April 30th, immediately prior to the effective date of the annual adjustment. So April of, if it was in place now, the CPI as of April 30th, just last month, is the CPI that they would use to give notice to us that the rates will increase by. And then that will go into effect August 1 of this year. So each year, that's the process. So under this section of the agreement, paragraph C says, well, what if the CPI goes down? The rates stay flat. They don't go down with it. Paragraph D, if they don't give us that notice, the base rates aren't adjusted. So they're motivated to remember that due date, and I'm motivated not to remind them. I'm sorry, Jason and Zach. But I'll represent the city. They have to take care of that business. Okay, I'll move on. Now, the section 3.3 says they can petition council, but we're going to leave it to them to stay on top of their game. Disposal fees. This is something that, you know, I've never had to think about, but there is this Texas Commission of Environmental Quality, that's TCEQ, Municipal Solid Waste Quarterly Report Requirements and Disposal Fee. Now Waste Connection owns its own landfill, but it is required to pay this fee to TCEQ. And right now, this fee is 94 cents per ton. And what is this fee for? I included that on the chart, and so if that adjusts, they will provide notice to us. And let's say it goes to $1. So that means our rate would adjust by 6 cents. This is 4.2, tells you what to expect around your solid waste, what to expect around your recyclables. I'm going to move on because we've already talked about that. Here's your brush and bulk pickup. It tells you in more detail what you are expected to leave out at the curb. And the household hazardous waste program, I already described that. Residential unusual accumulation collection. I think this is a great little perk in the agreement. We don't talk about it. But let's just say you have unusual accumulation. The contractor can be contacted by that customer, and for a payment of a fee, which is in the contract, it details what's the cost per hour, they will come out and say, you know, they cleaned out their garage, and you know, that once every two weeks, it's just going to leave a lot of junk, let's call it junk, in their yard for too long. Waste Connections will come out to the property and say, well, for all of this right here, here's your fee if you want us to take it away. And if you say yes, they will take it away. And this next one, I thought, was pointing, worth pointing out. Let's say we have a resident who's disabled, and they can't take that cart... and they can't take that cart out on collection day. This right here is the ability for a customer to contact Waste Connections. Waste Connections to consider their request. They have to come to me and say, this resident has asked for a physically disabled or because of age or other physical limitations, a special accommodation. And I either approve it or reject the contractor's determination. And so the way I read this is I can, if they say we're not going to provide it, I can overrule that. But I would do that based upon the facts provided. So I thought this is a really nice perk that we do have some residents in our community that it might be hard to pull out a 95 gallon cart. And right here, we get special needs attention. I already talked about the small business rate and the reason why we have a small business rate. It's because rather than forcing them to find an area to put a two-yard, four-yard, six-yard container on their property where they can't, they will use a 95 gallon recycling cart, just like a residential customer. And then the 4.20 shows they will be replacing all of their commercial containers that are in our businesses, at our businesses today, prior to the start of their contract. Because they work just like the ones Republic has, Republic may be picking up a Waste Connections roll-off dumpster up until July 25th. Because they will be in place before July 28. Complaints. I wanted you to know that we have detailed information and requirements in this franchise agreement on how complaints are to be handled. Collection vehicles and equipment. Council said you wanted to make sure that we didn't get the jalopies, the 20-year-old vehicles. This right here verifies that no vehicle shall be older than four years on commencement date and not older than 10 years at any time during this agreement. Monthly reports. I've already talked about that at a high level. We will be monitoring those reports. Annual reports. Contractors, office, and customer support. It's very detailed. This is what's required in the agreement. And again, this is the app, and we're all used to having apps on our phone now, so it's just like second nature. Sign up for waste collection reminders so that once every other week will the app say, hey, this is your once every other week brush and bulk pickup. Will it do that? Okay. It'll look at a map and it'll let you know that, oh, it is my week to get brush and bulk pickup. You'll receive alerts for your collection days and search how to properly dispose of materials. This is straight off of their website. I did not make those up. Billing. So cities shall provide billing for residential customers. Waste Connections shall provide billing for the commercial customers. Chipping service. We've said this to you. This is why you went with this level of service. The city will cease its chipping service because of the once every other week brush and bulk. I will tell you this, we are keeping the chipper machine. If there is a natural event in which we have downed trees and limbs all across the city, I'll work with Brian and Julio and say, it's time for us to go around the city and make a special pickup because that's not what Waste Connections can handle. And so we do have that machine. We have people who know how to use that machine, and that's when we will still use it. But on a regular basis, we are not doing chipper service anymore.
You'll continue through July, though?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
That's right. Just like twice a week garbage pickup through July 25th. And then we will be doing customer communication. Customer communication effective after approval of the ordinance. I'm going to look to Maggie if she would so step up and, out of the goodness of her heart. Oh, I didn't see Jeanette. I could have made Jeanette do this. Jeanette worked with Stephen Berry, who's a communications professional for Waste Connections. These are just a sample of what will be pushed out immediately after council's approval tonight. And Jeanette's gone so far as already to create on our website an announcement for the new franchise agreement, again, with your approval of the ordinance tonight. So these are just three simple advertisements. New changes for Siblo Waste and Recycling Services. It describes items that can be included and items that cannot be included in your recycling and brush and bulk pickup. And of course, we're going to encourage downloading the app. Currently, our franchise agreement is 15%. Staff recommended to city council to lower that to 10% because we were increasing rates. We wanted to be sensitive to the impact to all of our customers. And this page right here and your cover sheet talks about the revenue generation off of a 10% franchise fee. There's somewhat of a balance there. We're increasing rates. Even a 10% of those higher rates is very similar to the 15% on our lower rates. Counsel, I'm sorry if this was a little longer than you would like. It's important. It's a 10-year contract. And for any member of the public that's watching, I wanted to make sure that they understand the due diligence that staff and this council has taken to reach this point. If you would like Jason Rowe or Zachary Ryan to come up right now, I'd be happy to step to the side if you'd like them to say a few words.
So in the contract, there's a liquidated damages clause that talks about different things that if they happen, then there's fees associated with that. So a house is skipped or a street is skipped or neighborhood skipped, there's a fee. If there's damage to something, there's a fee. What is the enforcement of that like? Because I'm pretty sure our old one had that and we had issues with trash being spilled and things like that. I don't know what happened after those were reported.
We've luckily never had the chance to where Bear Waste or Republic never went back and cleaned it up, that we were able to enforce the fee that was included. So I think moving forward, if we had an issue that was not taken care of within a responsible amount of time, we'd be able to look at that and have that conversation at what council or the city manager thinks is appropriate moving forward.
Yep. And so if we're aware of any infraction of that agreement, we will enforce the provisions of the screen.
And that feeds into my next question. So good segue. There, section 5.5 has the complaint procedure for a customer, and they would complain to the contractor. And then the contractor is required to report that via email daily to the city with the contact information and everything. I don't know y'all, so this is really not an accusation of your character. I just want to make that very clear. How do we know that we're getting the feedback and the complaints? Because before, all the complaints were made to the city, so we got those firsthand, unfortunately and fortunately, I guess. Now, if they're going directly through the contractor, how do we know? I know that we end up, we get a lot of questions with people who say, I've reported it 57 times. And you go back through the data for anything, for a pothole or whatever, and you go back through the data and maybe it's never been reported. Maybe it was reported once a year ago. I just want to make sure that we are being responsive to residents. We are tracking those communications and that we are able to defend the city or the contractor or the resident, wherever it may fall, with the proof that we have, that we're actually collecting that and it's actually being followed up on and reported.
I'll say something short, but I think this is a perfect time for Mr. Rowe or Mr. Ryan to speak. I think the best business is built on solid relationships in which people have integrity in the roles and responsibilities that they have. I can have a great contract, and believe me, this is a great contract. Lynn Landtrip did us a favor giving us a best practice franchise agreement. These enforcement provisions are above anything that we have today. Complaints work this way. We will be reviewing them daily. What I do know is when a customer gets dissatisfied with the service provider, they elevate it. They elevate it to you, or they elevate it to Maggie, they elevate it to me, and then we know there's a problem. And so we will work very hard with Waste Connections to make sure that that is minimized, that things are elevated to us. I'll let them speak for themselves, but relationships that are built on, we're doing our job and you don't have to follow us every day to verify it, relies on them doing their job extremely well and based upon everything that we have researched about them and what they put in their proposals. I have confidence that they will do the right thing. There will be mistakes. There will be moments, even under Republic Services. They've done a great job, but there have been times where they missed the mark. They didn't close the loop with the customer. That's in this contract right now, that we have to close the loop with the customer. I'm going to let them come up and speak if that's all right, Ms. Cunningham.
Right. So I'm Jason Rowe, I'm the area municipality, and I used to be the DM in Seguin, Texas. I know the area really well. So I'm here helping with the contract, and this is Ryan.
Yeah, Zach Ryan, I'm the district manager. I run the day-to-day operations out of our location in Seguin. So I'll speak to the customer service, and I was going to say something very similar actually with the, but to build upon just the relationships that we have with the city staff and the communication. But beyond that, it behooves us to address concerns or issues that we have or where we fell short. So I push my team to aggressively seek not just satisfying the customer, but also if there was a procedural error or a communication error, shoring that up so that we're not continually making the same mistakes. So I think it's a good point that eventually, if we are, then it's going to be elevated and you'll hear about it anyway. Our goal is, of course, to handle everything prior to that point. But things do slip through the cracks. You know, we're servicing thousands of customers. But we take great pride in delivering great service. So anytime there is an issue, I can assure you, we will address it immediately and try to make sure that it doesn't happen again.
Anyone else have any questions? Don Dada, go ahead.
I just wanted to ask, on the flyer that was sent out, it says that when y'all start dropping off the bins and whatnot, are y'all going to be staying to the schedule that Republic has as far as picking up our trash? Or when are we going to know what subdivisions are going to be on what day and all that?
So right now, Republic does it three days a week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, one part. And then their second day is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Right now, we're going to try to split up the city five different sections. So we're going to have trucks here Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. That's our goal. So we'll have a truck here every week, every day of the week. So we will not be keeping the same schedule because they do it in three days. We're going to do it in five days. But we're going to try to keep it as close as possible to what the days they have, but people are going to have to go to Thursday, Friday on their routes.
Right. But what are you going to put out, the days?
Our goal is to be by middle of June to be with a map and everything, getting ready for it. If I get it before that, I'm going to try. So we're going to have to get everything downloaded in IT, and then we do a big map on it and split the city up. Because we have to split the city up of half A, B, and B week for bulk. And then we're going to have the week, the recycle gets picked up the same day as trash. So everything, so Monday route will be sectioned out, Tuesday route will be sectioned out, Wednesday's route will be sectioned out, Thursday route. So it'll be that way every single time.
And just that, we've already devoted a lot of time to preparing for this, but obviously tonight is the key marker for us to really, you know, hone in the final details of the approach of the operation.
I want to recommend our Jeanette Gonzalez and maybe Mr. Reed have the list of HOAs at the management companies and their contact information. So when you have that, it may be good to reach out to our communications department to have them forward that on to the management companies. They usually send out newsletters to all of the residents. So even if you do door hangers, even if you do a mailer, it's one more thing that you might be able to contact a few extra people that way.
We're hoping that we're going to have it downloaded up on the city website. We met with Jeanette this morning, and we're going to try to get it mapped to you guys as fast as we can. We already got, they gave us a list of the residential customers. We already sent it to IT. IT is already doing a big map of us, and so we're going to get it all detailed. So we start, our routes are, our trucks are going to have computers in it, so the guys will be clicking off every single time when they go to a resident. So we'll start the route at the same place, same time. So it's, they'll have, first round, it's going to take a couple of weeks for them to get used to us, but hopefully it'll go really smoothly after that.
Councilman Hicks.
Thank you, Mayor. What about, because I live in Old Town here, and there's businesses. How are y'all going to do that? Because I know usually they just go and they pick up Old Town all at the same day. How are they going to do that with the businesses that are in downtown?
We're going to do the same thing. So we're going to have a bulk truck here every day. It's going to be real loads of that bulk truck will be going here to pick up those businesses down there. So that's one of the things we talked to Mr. Reed about is that we're going to make sure we work with the downtown businesses down there, Old Town, because it's very safety-oriented to make sure we're there in and out of there before traffic starts and anything else, so there's no bottleneck of traffic. So we're in and out, we got it cleaned up before anyone knows we've been in there.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions just as well. So on your section for holidays and 5.4, there's mention that sometimes that y'all may reserve the right to not service holidays and you give two weeks notice. Have there ever been any instances before in any other cities where you have not serviced during holidays that does not pertain to inclement weather?
So the only time we've missed on holidays after is if there's a hail, a freeze. It's the only time here we have ever had a problem. But we still like, if we're, one day, like we're done on Wednesday, it's freezing, it's freezing, and Thursday we're operating. I mean, Saturday we'll be picking up Fridays. So we will, we've never left a city down in this area since I've been here.
Okay. And also regarding recyclable materials on section 4.4, it says that if things are not within the recycling container itself, let's say I buy a large TV and I have my big cardboard box out next to my recycling bin, will y'all pick that up?
The automated trucks won't do it, but the bulk truck can. So that's what I'm saying. If you can cut the, we always like to have you cut it up, put it in the container. Once a week recycling should be able to get all your recycling in the recycling container. But if you need a, we do with city, city Seguin, when people move in, we have a recycle truck come out there and pick up all the boxes and everything else. We work with the city on the extra recycle material, but they have to let us know it's going to be there. Does that make? So you just got to let us know.
Is that an extra fee also?
What's that?
Is it an extra fee to call you?
No, we try to get it, recycling, we try to get it all picked up. But the automated trucks, it's going to be tough to throw all the big boxes in. So we try to, and a lot of people, the styrofoam in those boxes, once you leave the styrofoam in the boxes, it's now not recyclable. It's just going to be pure cardboard. You got to take the styrofoam out.
So if I have like all my Costco extra boxes, I have to give you guys a call to say, hey?
Just tell us you're going to have extra recycling. Yes, please.
Okay. And I have another question. Usually, one thing that we're used to here in Sevillow is putting six additional bags in front of our trash bins because let's say we raked up all the leaves. And usually, we see a lot of our yard bags, our paper bags from, you know, the hardware store. And is that something that we can still do? Or is that going to be reserved for the bulk, the brush pickup? Because I didn't see that as an option in the brush for the agreement.
It would be with the brush bulk and bulk pickup every other week. So A, B will be one part of the city, B week will be the other part. So every other week, you get the brush and bulk of it.
Is there a way that we can include that in the agreement, just that it's written that we do have that as an option?
You want to label like yard waste?
Yes, exactly. That way. Because later, you're online, you never know, like three years into it, let's say, new staff and they're reading the agreement and they'll say, hey, we actually didn't, just so we cover the bases, because I know we, and to that point, is there a certain maximum of lawn bags that?
The limit is the three yards.
The three yards. Oh, yes, the microphone.
So it's three yards. So it's like three washing machines. So you can pile your bags up. We got to take the three yards.
Okay, so the bags are treated the same as if they were limbs?
That is correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions? Did you have another one, Joel?
I just got one last one. This automated, in the Old Town, we've got overhead wires. Is that going to be a problem?
No, if it's, you don't have any alley pickup, if a real look could go through it, like they've been picking it up, we can pick it up with an automated truck. It's the same height.
Okay. So we'll make sure because we've got overhead lines.
Okay. I just want to just clear up a couple of high-level understanding. Like if I were to just make this real simple for the citizens, the trash will be one time per week, recycling is every other week. And, oh, recycling is every week? Okay. I'm sorry. I saw on one of those slides where it was every other week. Okay, so recycling and trash both once a week, right? Okay. Okay. Every week. Okay. So trash one next per week, recycling every week as well. Okay. And let's see. And the new deal starts in August, and it's going, the total cost will be $21.89, which is $4.94 more than what we're paying right now, right? And the brush and bulk pickup is every other week. Is that right?
Yes. Start date is July 28.
July 28. Okay. All right. Just wanted to make sure I got these high-level points, just to make, to be real clear.
And just give people those bottom-line facts. And you said $21.89, right? 89 cents? Okay, just verifying.
That's accurate. Okay.
Yes, sir.
And then also on the week of July 15th is when the new trash cans will And then also, on the week of July 15th is when the new trash cans will be delivered. And then also, new routes.
Roughly the week of July 15th. Yes, sir.
All right. Very good. Yeah, just trying to be real concise and just give everybody the information they need to know. Okay. All right. Well, with that said, are there any questions before we take a vote? Okay. I'm gonna call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay. We got a motion by Councilman Hicks and a second by Councilwoman Donetta Roberts. Please vote on your screens.
And in that motion, will that also include the correction to 4.8 for the brush to allow the additional debris bags?
Let's look at section 4.8.
As long as it's, as long as it's three cubic yards, they can do it.
So, in the contract, there's no need to revise language, in my opinion. In our communication material, we will emphasize and include a picture of, this is what you've typically done when you've mowed your yard or done some yard work. These bags are once every other week, part of your brush and bulk pickup. We will be very clear in our communications over on that.
It'll be in our external digital assets and then on our website as well.
I would like to say, on that flyer that y'all sent out, or that, that does have the three trash cans there, that shows what the three cubic yards would be.
Yes, ma'am.
So, that's, it's a good point to.
Yeah. I kept using washing machines, but three of our carts.
Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
And thank you, City Council, for your direction on this.
And thank you to both of you gentlemen from Waste Connections for coming out and for servicing Sevillow. We look forward to a nice, profitable partnership.
We're looking forward to it too.
Thank you, guys.
And Mayor, they've already signed that agreement, because if you approved it tonight, we wanted you to be able to execute it tonight and we'll deliver it to them. If they want it tomorrow, we'll deliver it to them tomorrow.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Reed. All right. We're gonna move on to 11A. Approval/disapproval of a resolution of the City of Sevillow providing notice and intent to acquire property for a roadway reconstruction project on Tolly Road, authorizing such acquisition by donation, purchase, or eminent domain, determining such acquisition is for public use, authorizing entry into real property, authorizing and directing the city manager to work with property owners to acquire the needed property, and to make a final offer to the property owners, authorizing payment of the costs of such purchase or eminent domain proceedings and all associated costs in connection with the acquisition of real property. Mr. Reed? I'm sorry, Julio Gomis.
Yes, Mayor, Council. So, tonight, this resolution is, just to give a brief background of this history for Tolly Road, this project was originated in 2018 with City Council's approval, putting this on the 2018 election ballot. The voters did approve the proposition and in 2019, this was the first year of this project after the voter approval. We're currently entering our seventh year developing this project. The remaining product, the remaining work that includes the surveying of the properties that we need in order to acquire for the purpose of drainage improvements and road improvements. All combined, this is about 2.1 acres that the city needs to acquire either through easements or transfer of property. The city staff and consultants have made efforts to reach out with 13 property owners over the past several months. At this time, we've gotten participation from seven property owners. We have six that have not done that. Currently, we're up to four. We have four property owners still remaining on this one. And so, until we can get all 13 property owners to allow us to do the surveying, we cannot proceed with this project. Currently, we've provided with City Council with an updated OPC for this project. On today's cost of this project, every day that we continue to delay, this project will continue to get more expensive. So, we're coming to council tonight to ask that you allow our city manager to work with the property owners to acquire the needed property and to make a final offer to these property owners, either through cost of such purchase or eminent domain.
Thank you, Julio. Katie, you have a question?
Yeah. On the support documents that are in here, it looks like several property owners have not participated. There's property two, four, seven, eight, 10, and 13, I think. I thought you had spoken to property 13, or whatever the last one is, and that they were moving forward with signing. And then, I for sure talked to four, seven, and eight, and they all said that they would be willing to do the survey. So, I was just wondering if there's any progress on that.
Yes. So, the only property owners that we have not received any participation from would be property owner two, four, and eight, and 10. Those are the only ones that are still remaining, the four that remain.
Yeah. It's this one, Julio. This one with little dots.
Okay.
That I'm looking at. Okay. So, four said that they, he would, he was just not gonna sign anything. And I can reach back out to him again, but I thought that that had, that y'all were just gonna go back out there and let him know that you were coming.
So, we, we can't enter a property owner's property without them sending us an email.
Absolutely.
So, we're still waiting on that email. Once he gives us that authorization, we will go out there and do that survey work.
And then, same with eight. He wanted to meet with staff out on his property, because he had concerns about the getting in and out with the turn lane in front of his property.
Yes. Yes. We have reached out to him numerous times. He has stated that he is willing to meet with us, but every time we try to meet with him, there's this issue that comes up. So, we're still trying to attempt with him as well.
Yeah. I'm, I know I've said this before. I'm concerned about this because I don't want to hold up the project. I know it's been a very, 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 very long, drawn-out project. I know that we have a lot of money tied up in this. We need to move forward with it. We need to get it done. We need to get it started, get something moving. I get it. This resolution or ordinance, whatever it is, resolution, it authorizes not just moving forward with trying to say, hey, we wanna buy your property, hey, we wanna do the survey, but it authorizes the city to take steps for eminent domain. If this goes to eminent domain, will these properties come back to the city at all, or is this our one and done? Vote on it.
What was that question again?
So, if these, if these properties go to eminent domain, if it does have to go through that process, will they come back to the city council to approve moving forward with the official eminent domain proceedings? Is this just an authorization, for lack of a better word, because I can't think of one, but it's an authorization for us to use the threat of eminent domain?
Yes. At this point, that is. So, anything that we do in regards to eminent domain would come back to city council.
And so, that's our commitment. Staff doesn't have the authority to initiate that and file papers with courts. We will come back to you with each individual property. We will explain what we have done, what interaction we've had with the property owner, and you ultimately decide whether or not to actually commence eminent domain.
Okay. And I think my concern is that the wording says, authorizing payment of the costs of such purchase or eminent domain proceedings and all associated costs in connection. So, I just wanna make very, very sure that this does not mean that we're flat-out authorizing eminent domain moving forward. I know it may have to happen. It's, I don't, I'm never gonna be in support of eminent domain. It just, it's not my thing. But, I do know that some of these property owners are willing. They've been very tricky to get ahold of sometimes. But, it's not like they're, they're combative or like kicking us off their property or something. And the threat of eminent domain is a really real threat. We had these same property owners dealt with the toll road not too long ago, where that eminent domain was threatened. They've been threatened by a lot of other development and things that are coming in, taking right-of-way, putting in lines, all of that fun stuff. So, I just wanna make sure that we're still keeping our residents in mind. Yes, the project needs to be done for residents, for everyone in Steel Creek who needs a second exit, for all the residents on Tolly Road who have driven on that road forever in its condition and get flooded out by it. But, we also have to be respectful of their property rights.
Yes. And we'll continue to work with these property owners. We will continue to make contact up until it gets to that point. I know you've been a great help to us reaching these property owners. So, any support that we can get from council as well to try to continue to reach out to these property owners. That's our main focus, is trying to get that cooperation.
I'll come again tomorrow.
Yes.
Councilman Mahoney?
I think, just to clarify, in the, in the event of an eminent domain action, that, confirm for me, that property owner still gets eventually compensated for their land, right? And I just think that we ought to say that out loud, because there are people, I've, I've known people that think eminent domain is the government snatching your property without compensation. But, I've been with a, with a relative or two situations up in Dallas County where a freeway was being built and they got into that thing and there was negotiations. They ended up getting a fair market price for some tenth of an acre or some tiny wedge of their property. So, it's not like mean old government is just gonna steal their land.
And you're right, that it is a negotiation also. So, it's not a single price and a, that's it. Take it or leave it.
Well said. Thank you very much, Councilman Mahoney. And, you know, and also, this is just, you know, furnished road, just a snippet of land by the, by the front of the road. So, it's not, you know, taking their, you know, front yard or their backyard or anything that, you know, that they're using on their property, really.
Yes. And a lot of these are easement acquisitions, not actual land acquisitions. So, the land acquisitions more for the turn lanes and the road improvements.
I will say that I did go out to one property owner's house with Julio and he explained it very well to them. There's a lot of fear from property owners about what the land is gonna be used for, what it will look like, and then how much of the land is being asked for in the right-of-way. And those, that, that communication and those conversations are really important, because it helps dispel that fear and kind of clarify what is going to be done. A lot of the easements too are staying grassy. It's just, the easement is so that the city can maintain it, maintain the, the angles and all that other fun stuff that we have to maintain to ensure drainage. But, these are also people who had the toll road ten, less than 10 years ago, come out and say that they're gonna split their land in half. They were gonna take half their property. So, yes, it is, it may just be a little piece of the front of their property. They may not even notice it. Maybe it's just a grassy area easement. It might not be anything, but it doesn't discount their fear or their concern that their property that they've lived on for 30-plus years could potentially be impacted by the city coming in and doing something for the city as opposed to for them. So, I just wanted to say that, too.
Thank you, Katie. And so, the easement would mainly be for utilities that are buried underground and then maybe for a little bit of drainage, too. Okay.
This would be primarily for drainage. So, when we need to mow the area, make sure that it's maintained so that where the water still goes through the culverts areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from council before we take a vote? Anything else? No? Okay. Can I call for a motion, please, on the resolution 11A?
Beg to motion to approve 11A.
For eminent domain, not for?
I make a motion to approve 11A. Okay. I got a motion on the table by Councilman McLaughlin and a second by Councilman Randy Roberts. Please vote on your screens. You wanna do a voice vote, Joel? Okay. So, we have four to three. So, it's approved, but not a supermajority. So, we needed a supermajority? Nothing like that? Not tonight? Okay. All right. So, it is approved, four to three. All right. Thank you, guys. All right. We're gonna move on to 12A. Discussion action regarding CCMA Southern WWTP, which is the wastewater treatment plant expansion, to 3 million gallons per day. Mr. Reed, Mr. Ellis.
All right. Thank you again, Mayor and members of council. Let me wait for the PowerPoint to come up. Not that one. And not that one. So, it would say CCMA South WWTP Expansion has two pictures of the wastewater treatment plant. Okay, that'll work. I'll, we'll rotate it. Okay. I can use this right here. I already rotated it. All right. I'll take it from there. Thank you. Good evening. I'd like to recognize Clint Ellis. He's right here in this tie and sport jacket. Clint Ellis is the general manager. He's been the general manager for some time for the Sevillow Creek Municipal Authority, so CCMA. We also have Ryan Mattson. He's in the back. He's also with CCMA and very critical to the successful operation of this organization and a partner with the City of Sevillow and the City of Shirts. And I also wanna say thank you to the council members who made a special trip out to see both the north wastewater treatment plant, which is much larger than the one in the picture, and the south wastewater treatment plant, which is shown in the picture here. It looks like two big cereal bowls. You don't wanna eat what's in these cereal bowls. But, Mr. Mahoney, thank you. Ms. Sanchez Stevens and Mr. Hicks, thank you for your time the other morning. I made a commitment to the rest of council to find a date to get you out to look at the wastewater treatment plants. We picked a beautiful day and so, I'll work with you on dates for another tour. These are the major topics that we are going to cover. And the feedback that we're asking is summarized right here. Do you have any questions or comments about the strong residential growth that's occurring to the west and east of Sevillow Creek and between FM 78 and I-10 and the Shirts growth area and along GV Sud Santa Clara wastewater interceptor corridor? We go over that in detail in this presentation and it's essentially to prove to council, there is a demand and when you build sewer, growth follows. Does council, city council have any questions about the projected growth in Sevillow's growth area that will be connected to the south plant? We have some charts in here that show our projected growths. And does council support attending a joint meeting, support attending, us coordinating a joint meeting between Shirts, CCMA, and Sevillow to discuss expansion in more detail? And let me say this. If the City of Shirts says, you know, we're good, we're ready just to proceed with this funding agreement for the next phase, then it would just be possibly a joint meeting with CCMA, or it might be a meeting where it's a workshop where Clint Ellis comes back and Ryan Mattson, and we just dive in more detail. And so, please allow me some latitude on describing that meeting right there. And those are the three things I'd like you to focus on tonight. And so, really, your direction, you're giving direction tonight, taking no real action. I really wanna know if you want to proceed and further explore it. There's a meeting in the future of some form and we will spend plenty of time delving into the details. So, city council will remember during a present, during this presentation, that I'm just asking council to think about the future, kinda like your strategic management workshop. Success requires strong partnerships with our surrounding agencies and existing partners like CCMA, the City of Shirts, and GV Sud, and many other partners. This presentation is crucial for council to understand how our decisions today either support our future growth or constrict our ability to serve future growth. Again, it's about controlling our destiny. And lastly, the reason Mr. Ellis and I are presenting on this topic tonight is because the City of Shirts came forward to say, the flows into the south plant from our development is reaching that tipping point. is reaching that tipping point that we need additional capacity. Now, we're in a different boat. We don't need additional capacity. But here's the deal, and Mr. Ellis will explain this. Because Shirts is proceeding with a separate agreement with them to expand it to accommodate their future growth, this is our one opportunity to get in on this expansion. If we do not participate in this expansion, as Mr. Ellis will say, once it's done, they're not going to look to expand it for another six years. And so it's not because we need it right away, but if we don't join in on this expansion, we won't have the opportunity for many more years in the future. And so that's why we're showing you some projected growths here. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Ellis.
And how do I control the mouse button?
I'm just clicking right there.
Got it, thank you. Perfect. Mayor, council, appreciate y'all having me out tonight. This slide shows the overview of CCMA's existing wastewater treatment permit. We're currently in what we call interim phase one. That's a half million gallons per day, 250,000 gallons per day for Shirts, 250,000 gallons per day for y'all, for Siblo. Interim phase two, the city of Shirts's requested capacity for the expansion moves us beyond interim phase two just for the city of Shirts. The current permit takes us to a final phase of 3 million gallons per day. You can see that's 19,350 LUEs. An LUE is a living unit equivalent. That's a single family residence. The plant can be expanded to any capacity between 1 MGD and 3 MGD with a minor amendment. Expansion beyond 3 MGD would require a major amendment to the permit. But we have already elected to move forward with a major amendment. So we are in our renewal cycle and we've indicated interest to TCEQ to take the permitted capacity for this facility up to 6 million gallons per day with an interim phase of 3 MGD. Anticipate, submit to TCEQ by the end of June. TCEQ's permit review prospects can take up to 12 months and we could work on the design of the expansion concurrently with the TCEQ review. This map basically shows the service area for the south plant. You can see the green shaded area to the north. That's the OJR, our northern facility, everything. And the yellow shaded is generally the south plant. Some of the eastern sections, the portion that looks like it could be a hammer, that really does not flow to the south plant. That would go to GV Sud Santa Clara Creek wastewater treatment plant facility. So I spoke to Shirts's expansion request. The city of Shirts, to remind you, has a quarter million gallons. Siblo has a quarter million gallons. Shirts has requested, just for their part, an additional 1.375 million gallons per day. So they're requesting almost 9,000 homes worth of additional capacity. The plant expansion would be to a minimum of 1.875 MGD. Again, if Siblo elected not to participate in this expansion, city would have, city of Shirts would have 1.625, city of Siblo would have 0.25. What is driving the demand for the city of Shirts's request? It's kind of a small map, a little bit hard to see. If you can see my cursor right here, the city of Shirts has indicated 1,400 and I think that is 62 EDUs. Oh, there you go. So... So right there, the unshaded color, that's really difficult to see on this map. City of Shirts has said to us that they've got 1,400 EDUs. That's another term for a single family home that is either connected to the system or ready to be connected to the system. They've identified 6,200 EDUs worth of development that they expect within the next five years. That's driving this large capacity request from the city of Shirts for the second phase, this first expansion of the south plant. The plant is currently flowing about 125,000 gallons per day. Shirts is the only current contributor to the flows of the facility. So Shirts is currently sending half of their allotted capacity to the plant. That other half of theirs, 125,000 gallons per day, is for Green Valley Special Utility District. That's what Shirts and GV Sud allotted to GV Sud through their comprehensive settlement agreement that ended the litigation between the two parties. So Shirts has to reserve that additional 125,000 gallons for GV Sud. So it's a long way of saying Shirts needs this expansion pretty quick. Mr. Reed?
So this map shows you the other side of the creek and it shows you what happens. And I've been here for four years and when I started, there was no Santa Clara wastewater treatment plant. There was no Santa Clara interceptor. But we had three subdivisions developing on Green Valley Road that GV Sud committed to serve. And sometime in early 20, or somewhere in 2022, they made that connection and the system went live early 2023. What's highlighted in red shows you the development that's happened in a few short years. And so during our mediated settlement, I show, I developed this map with our engineers and shared it with council saying, look at all of these developments lining up. We have studied what GV Sud is committed to. We know that when they connect this sewer up and the plant goes live, that development will follow. Now, there's a separate PowerPoint in your packet tonight, which I did not want to take our time in presenting, but it shows you subdivision after subdivision after subdivision. If you look at the names on those PowerPoint slides and the names on this slide, you can see where those pictures are taken from. And there are subdivisions with municipal utility districts that are developing out there. And so Mr. Ellis talked about the east, the west side of the creek and what Shirts is seeing. I'm showing what's happening on the east side of the creek, but further to the east. Then there's this area, our five square miles, where there is no sewer line. And guess what? There are no demands for sewer. But as soon as the city develops that sewer connection from the south plant across the creek towards Haverhill Road and Bolton, that's the first project, I'm generalizing its location, development will come. And so when we studied this during our mediated settlement, we also said, well, where would the backbone interceptors go to serve our five square miles? And this is what this desktop analysis showed. So it's kind of hard on the screen to see, but it, it's the same picture that I was sharing with council back in 2023 and early 2024. You can see in the lower left that it's the CCMA South WWTP. There's a label for that. And then you see a green line crossing the creek and heading over to Haverhill Road and Bolton Road. And then along Bolton Road and then goes north, somewhere around Stolti Road. Those are the backbone interceptors that engineers during our mediated settlement process said, this is likely. Now, this is a desktop analysis. You've already authorized Friesen Nichols to do the wastewater master plan for the south Siblo area. Now, they will come back with something that looks a little different and is sized more precisely and will have updated figures for costs. What I'm trying to say is we have the ability to serve our five square miles and we're putting the plans in place so that we can service it. I'll hand it back over. This one's me, I'm very sorry. So this is our comprehensive settlement agreement. Mr. Ellis shared with you that the city of Shirts gave half of its 0.25 MGD to GV Sud in its settlement. In our settlement, we pushed hard to not give that much. They did ask, we kept saying no. What we did agree to is that they will get 25,000 gallons per day in phase one. That's what's there today. They can also obtain at cost an additional 25,000. So we go to 200,000 if they were to come to us and say, we want that additional capacity. But they have the right for that 25,000 from day one. And they can take that from either side of the creek. It doesn't have to be our side. Now, because of what Mr. Ellis has shared with you tonight, there is no phase two. We're going straight to a phase three because we're far exceeding the planned phase two. We're jumping into the phase three. And so what it boils down to is that with this expansion, we will have to give GV Sud the capacities that are shown here. The minimum, or what's guaranteed to them, is the 325,000 GPD per day. And if they want to come back and get additional, they pay the cost. You can see that it's an additional 150,000. I think I'm doing the math in public pretty good right there. And that's it. I wanted to share with you what we have. Back to you, Mr. Ellis.
So working with city staff and y'all's consultants, we've developed a couple of different scenarios for the city to consider. First one would be what we're calling option one. Construction would be an additional 500,000 gallons per day of capacity for the city of Siblo. The total capacity for the facility would be 1.875 MGD. And of course, the city of Shirts has already requested 1.375 MGD. That's a constant throughout the presentation. So again, that would give the city a total capacity of 4,838 LUE, single family homes, of which 325,000 gallons per day of that 750,000 would be committed to GV Sud at no cost per the comprehensive settlement agreement. This graph shows the projections developed by Friesen Nichols for the city and Garver for GV Sud of projected wastewater demand over the next decade. Under this scenario, if the city bought in for an additional half million gallons per day, you would essentially run out of capacity, according to y'all's own internal projections, the year after this plant was completed. Mr. Reed referenced earlier that it would be some time before additional expansion opportunities would come about. What that refers to is we would need to complete this expansion, get that contractor offsite, get our ASBILs for the expanded facility before we could realistically start design on another expansion. These are not quick projects. On the very rosy side of things, we're looking at four years. If stuff starts to go wrong, delays, anything outside of our control that would slow the process down, you're looking at a six, seven year project. I say that to say you would be looking at another opportunity to bring additional capacity to the city sometime 2034 to 2037. These are the estimated costs of option one. So the total expansion cost would be roughly $65 million. The way we get that is we assume a cost per gallon for construction of the wastewater facility. Internally, we're consuming, or we're assuming $30 per gallon. We're seeing anywhere from $25 to $60 per gallon across this region. Most of the projects are coming back between 25 and 30. We think by the time this project would hit the streets, we'd be somewhere around the $30 per gallon range. But again, there's a lot of factors outside of our control that can drive that cost up or drive that cost down. Siblo's share at a half million additional gallons would be roughly 26.6%. $15 million for construction, about two and a quarter million for design. The total cost for the city under this scenario would be 17.25 million. This slide does not include contingency funds. Another note on the design cost, that two and a quarter million, not all of that would be due upfront during design. That includes the entire turnkey consulting package from the design firm that would take us through construction phase services and post-construction phase services. Option two would be a larger amount of capacity for the city of Siblo. This would be Siblo buying in at 1.375 MGD. This would bring the total expanded capacity of the plant to 3 MGD. This would be a two and a half million gallon expansion. This would give the city of Siblo 8,870 LUEs. Again, y'all have the same 325,000 gallons per day that would be committed to GV Sud. This would take the facility to its current final phase of the permit. Under the amended permit that we're filing, that would be interim phase one, so 3 million gallons per day. And again, last line, it says additional capacity for GV Sud is not included in this option. We received feedback from GV Sud that they're just looking for the capacity due to them under the comprehensive, comprehensive settlement agreements. They aren't buying in beyond that. Same flow projections from y'all's consultants. This takes you out to 2035, 2036. So under this scenario, there wouldn't be a capacity bottleneck until about 10, 12 years from now. That would give us an opportunity to expand this plant. And if y'all's flow projections appear to be accurate, probably immediately start working on another expansion. Option two estimated cost, total project for the two and a half million gallon expansion to a permitted total of 3 MGD, 86 and a quarter million. Again, that's assuming $25 per gallon, or that's assuming $30 per gallon, but with a pretty big range, 25 to 60. Construction costs 75 million. Siblo would be 45% of this. So y'all's cost just for construction would be roughly 33.75 million. Total design cost, 11 and a quarter. Y'all's part would be 5.06. So the total buy-in for Siblo to come in, I think it was at 1.375 million. 1.125 million, I apologize, of additional capacity would be $38 million. And again, this does not include contingency. So here's the full comparison of the two options side by side. Again, figures we've already gone through. For the city of Siblo, half million of additional capacity, all in, we're looking at around 17, 18 million dollars to get an additional 1.125 million gallons worth of capacity. Be looking at somewhere between 35 and 40 million dollars. Some additional considerations. Again, I've already addressed the first item. We're going through a major amendment. These figures are estimates. I like to stress that. There's a lot of external factors that can impact the cost of construction. It can be material price increases, if we have some type of labor disruption, if multiple like entities bid wastewater plants in central Texas at the same time, that drives the cost up because contractors aren't as hungry. There's things that go into this that could impact how much that costs. We've got some benefits. If we get both cities tying in, there's, you know, economies of scale for building a larger facility. So that can help us reduce costs as we move through the construction. I've already addressed the fact that there probably wouldn't be another expansion for at least six years after today, so probably 12 years for the capacity, 10 to 12 years. And the cheapest time to build is going to be now. So we just expanded our north facility. We completed that in 2021. We bid that project in 2017 and it cost us $7.95 per gallon. That was for a 3.8 million gallon expansion. We constructed the south plant. We just brought that online a couple of months ago. We bid that project in 2019 and it came back at 1740 per gallon. We're anticipating somewhere between $25 and $30 per gallon today. So this is consistently getting more expensive. Timeline, next steps. So the next step would be for the cities and CCMA to negotiate the contracts that deal with the financing, the construction, the phasing. We're hoping to have agreements in place by the end of 20, by the end of September. We're looking at somewhere between 15 and 25 months of design and financing. There's also a TCEQ review built into that. That's usually about 12 months, but it all runs concurrently. We're looking at three months to advertise and evaluate the respondents and somewhere between 24 and 30 months for construction. So if everything goes great, four years from, really, whenever we get the notice to proceed from the cities to as long as 65 months, 72 months if we run into snags. So four to six years, seven years.
Mayor and council, that's the end of this presentation tonight. The first two questions, if you could think about those. Do you have any other questions or comments that based upon this presentation, you need more information? But ultimately, do you support another meeting to dive deep into this and talk more about how we structure the debt for this type of plant expansion? How we work with CCMA with impact fees and how their impact fee would help offset the cost of this expansion as well? When I say help offset, it'll pay for some... When I say help offset, it'll pay for some of the debt that's issued for this.
Anybody have any questions? Go ahead, Councilman Mahoney, then you, Joel.
Comment. Well, first, I want to tell Mr. Ellis the tour was wonderful, very, very informative. And I hope the rest of the council gets an opportunity to go out there and see it. I hope they get a nice breezy day like we did so that it's more pleasant because of the breeze. Anyway, I just wanted to simply say that I am a little shocked about that line item about the design cost on this. That number just blows me away how high it is. And I hope that CCMA is in the mood to drive that down, really control that, and not just see it as a cost. We'll just pass this along to the cities and nobody will notice because that's a high, in my opinion. But I'm no engineer. Just simply wanted to say that.
Yes, sir. We certainly do negotiate with the consultants. They're very complex design jobs. That's what we've seen on our past projects. We're also looking at long construction phase services. So, about probably 4% to 5% of that 15% is the construction phase services. So, we're looking at multi-year-long construction projects, a lot of RFIs, a lot of submittals. And we've seen that drive the design costs up. It's not just the detailed design.
Councilman Hicks?
Sorry about that.
Couple of things here. We still have to pay for our portion of what we've got right there right now for the .25. That starts next year or two years from now?
This year?
This year.
We made our first payment for interest only, I believe, in March. Second one will be September.
I knew that it was coming up really quick, and we've got to start paying on that. But I will say this, that because of our settlement with Green Valley SUD, we're going to have to take on this project, no matter what y'all think here because that was part of our settlement. And right now, our 2.5, our .25 that we have won't even cover theirs. They're part of the settlement. So, we're going to have to, we're going to have to go into this. I think we need to have another meeting to get in depth. I don't like doing this on nights like this where we've got all these other items. Glad it's here. I will add to this because past council before myself or my father was on here, stubbed shirts and sagan because it was supposed to be a water project that, and you might know this, but there was a water project that was supposed to go all the way to Converse. Converse pulled out, Marion pulled out, Sibolo pulled out, Saws pulled out. And it left just sagan and shirts in there. And we messed up. Well, not we, but that previous council messed up by snubbing it because now we're looking for water. And we have our own corporation with them right now. And it just kind of has come to fizzle. We need to make sure that, I think this is a project we've got to jump on now because we have to. I mean, we've made a settlement. I don't know which option. I think it's good that we have a different meeting, sit down, and we can get into the weeds instead of being here. But I just wanted to mention those two things that, or three things, that we missed a water opportunity now. I don't want us to miss out on a sewer opportunity.
So, do you think maybe we should have a workshop to talk about this in depth?
Absolutely, Mayor.
Okay, so that might be something we can look at, is setting up a special workshop, Mr. Reed, whether that's on a, like an evening, or maybe on a, I don't know, a Saturday morning? I hate to say that, but I don't know.
I think an evening is all we need. We don't need an all-day Saturday or half-day Saturday. And that's the third question here, and we're thinking a June workshop.
Yeah, let's do a workshop on this.
And I'd just like to go around the entire dais. I want everybody to give us direction. Thank you.
Sure, okay. Donetta, please.
I just want to kind of mention something to Mr. Mahoney in regards to the cost. Being on the Board of Trustees for the CRWA, this actual, we actually just are working on an expansion of one of their wastewater plants as well. And this cost is kind of in line with what that is, with that particular entity. So, I just wanted to let you know that this is not far-fetched.
Thanks, Donetta. Anything from you?
Yes, I also like to add that entertaining the workshop idea, I think it's fantastic. And going into the tour, it was very insightful to all that it takes, seeing the new technology, just as well as far as the wells are concerned. A three-in-one system, really, you know, we need to jump on that just as well. Also, I would like to see that, I mentioned it on the tour, maybe a couple of slides of the master plan itself for the south plant would be a great visual for us to see the grand picture of what we're investing in because this was a great presentation in words and some mapping. And now, I'd like to see in depth what the funds are going to actually cover. And so, I think that will bring a lot more perspective. So, appreciate that.
We'll include that in the workshop.
Anyone else have any thoughts on council?
Well, to add to that real quick, we've got to, we're going to have to pay for a lift station from our side of Bolton to the other side of the creek. So, I know the estimate for that a couple of years ago was 9 million. So, we've got to factor that in as well.
Thank you. All right. So, do we want to take a vote on this? Or do you want to wait for the workshop, Mr. Reed?
Again, tonight was direction. What I did not hear is that we left out some information to help you understand why we're talking about it. I think we're all clear. It's the demand for growth, and we know that growth will come our way as soon as we put that interceptor at Haverhill in Bolton. You also are not telling me that you're doubting the growth projections for our own area. It's in line with what we're seeing around us. So, the direction tonight that I've heard explicitly, but by silence, and so I'm saying it for the whole council, is schedule a workshop. We'll work with Mr. Ellis for a June budget workshop. I'll work with Ms. Simick. She'll send some dates out for some options. And there'll be an evening workshop that we'll do. And that's it, Mayor. That's all I need tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reed.
Thank you.
If anybody else would like to come out for a tour. It's my favorite part of my job. Y'all, please let me know.
Will do. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Very good. All right. We're going to jump over to 13. The city council will meet in executive session as authorized by the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to discuss the following. A, petition for consent to the creation of and inclusion of land within a municipal utility district, AKA mud. B, water well and irrigation agreement on conservations easement with the landowners, preserving the historic rights to the field and use of the well. The time is now 9:08 PM. We will break into executive session.
All right, we are back from executive session. We ended at, I think it was 9:08, but now it's 9:36. We are back from executive session. No action taken on the items that we discussed during executive session. We're going to go back up the agenda to item number 12B, discussion action on combining downtown market days and Sibolo summer nights. Mr. Howard.
And to clear up some confusion about a comment that was made April 11th at the council meeting. Yes, so my goal is to answer all the questions that council has as it pertains to some of the changes that were made to our market days and our Sibolo summer nights. And to hopefully, at the end of this conversation, be able to not only gain your trust, but also be able to gain your approval of the changes that have been made. So I'd like to start with the strategic plan. The changes that were made, those changes were made with these strategic plans in mind. Quality of life and financial integrity were the two main strategic goals that stood out. The reason why is because our goal is to be able to make our events more lively, to make them more interactive for our community, but also to be able to have a level of financial integrity for our vendors. 2025, 2024, we had eight market days. Of those eight market days, the most highly trafficked market days that we had was our children's market and our downtown tree lighting. The average cost for vendors, $42, and on average, about 100 to 150 vendors, 150 attendees would come out to the event throughout a five-hour event. So as I attended those events, of the eight, I attended six because that's when I was hired. And what I started to notice was three things: attendance from our vendors, foot traffic, and location. What I've learned from the past and working with prior cities and other parks and rec professionals is whenever you have events that are struggling, events that the attendance is going down, the vendor attendance is going down, you look at other events that are already well-trafficked to see how you can pair them together to be able to improve the event. In event management school, there's a term that we use. It's called an intercept survey. That intercept survey is a term that we use in how we operate when using an intercept survey is we talk to vendors while they are at the events. If you've ever put on any type of event, or if you've ever had to interact and do a certain task, you know that whenever you're asked to stay on the phone for a survey, most people usually hang up. Same thing when we, when we're doing events. When you're doing an event, after the event, it is very challenging to get vendors to be able to engage and to interact with our surveys so we can track the data. So an intercept survey is what we used last year prior to our splash bash event. I went, while I was at the event, I went to each vendor and I talked to them. I asked them, what were some of the challenges? What were the things that you wanted us to improve? What were the areas that we could better serve them? And what things would they like to see changed? It was also during that conversation that I asked them, hey, are you familiar with our Sibolo summer nights? Many of them had no idea that we were doing Sibolo summer nights. These are some of the other questions that were asked. The basis behind these questions is simply to gauge general satisfaction, event organization, sales and attendance, and the support of services. That's the basis behind a lot of these questions. And as I said, going back to those strategic goals, financial integrity. If you're paying forty two dollars as a vendor and over a five hour event, you're only seeing about a hundred to a hundred and fifty people. You're not, you're not, your money's not going too far. But when offered the opportunity to be at our Sibolo summer nights. This is the feedback that was given. An email was sent to vendors, which was an area of opportunity, our market vendors about our Sibolo summer nights. This is the test subject that we use to be able to see if we were going to make this change and if the change would be successful. So we started with our Sibolo summer nights, our splash bash, and I sent out an email giving them all the information about our splash bash. Letting them know the amount of people, the foot traffic, and the potential opportunity that could come by being a part of those events. This is another page of the emails, of the responses that came from various vendors.
Can I stop you just for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have these emails where you can provide them? Because I specifically asked you the question, do you have a response from vendors? And you told me that you had not received any responses from vendors. And now magically, there's responses from vendors.
So the response that you, when we had our meeting with myself, Mr. Reed and Julio, I had those emails. Unfortunately, we never got to those emails because we were talking about other things, but Mr. Gomez and Mr. Reed will tell you that I had those emails.
You showed me the email that you sent and you said you sent it to, at that time, it was like two hundred and something people.
Yes, ma'am.
But that you were gonna, that you had sent down another one. And I asked you, did you get a response? And you specifically said, no, you had no responses.
So the, I would like to-
I'm just asking, do you have these where you could actually show them to us that this is the date it was received?
Okay, so let me ask you a question. Yes, I do have these and I can show you that. I believe Mr. Reed still should have the email with all of these email responses. And they should have been as an attachment on this PowerPoint. If they were not, I will make sure that you get them before I leave this building. In addition to that, the email response, or the response that I said I did not have an answer to was, again, in the April presentation, it was initially said that a survey went out. A survey didn't go out. I had an intercept conversation with them and an email went out detailing the splash bash event. And this is the response that you see, the response of the splash bash. So when you asked me, did I have a response for the survey, I didn't have a response for the survey. Okay, so-
I also asked if you had, because you said you had the email and you showed me an email.
Yes, ma'am.
And I said, do you have the response, any responses from vendors regarding this email? And you said, no, you did not.
And Mr. Howard and Ms. Roberts, the email that we had was not a survey. It was an email letting vendors know over how many hundreds of?
So it, the initial email that went out for the splash bash, which was the test subject, was for the over two hundred vendors.
So it was, it was over two hundred vendors, but it wasn't a survey and that's what I was speaking to Ms. Roberts and what Mr. Howard has said. What we will do tonight is you have emails from these vendors, maybe a few more. We will scan all of those into one PDF and we will send that to council. Is that okay, Mr. Howard?
Yes.
Mr. Howard, would you be able to provide the questions that these, these responses are answering? Because I know we have the responses, but we don't know exactly what the questions were.
Yes, so, so again, and this will be detailed all in the email. What you will see is an email went out to the vendors after our July market day detailing the event for the splash bash. So the responses that you see, if you see right up under the header, it says in response to an email sent out July twelfth. That email went out and it was, again, in response to me having an intercept survey, going and speaking with the vendors at the event. So I will make sure that you guys get those emails so that way you will be able to fact check everything that I'm saying. And that's why I said I'm here to clear the air on everything that was said in the April eleventh presentation.
You said that you talked to the vendors.
Yes.
So when you sent out that email to get these responses, did you, again, reiterate the questions that you asked? Or the information that you asked when you were speaking to the vendors? Or was it just a general, this is our next event, would you like to participate?
So if you-
So I'm just, when we get the email, I just want that clarification, if we could get that clarification in the email.
Right, so we'll handle that via email.
Yes.
Say that one more time, I was typing.
All right, so he's going to communicate that as far as his questions in the email.
So he talked, so he said he spoke with the vendors, but then this email, we, like, we just had, so what were the questions? Whenever he sent this email out, did he reiterate what the questions were or what he was looking for? Or was it just, this is our next event, would you like to participate? Just so we kind of have an idea where all this comes from.
Here were the questions that were asked, you'll see that I put on the screen. So after having those conversations, when I sent the email out, again, the face to face interaction of conversations was, do you know about the event? What are the things can we change? So when I sent the email out, I was not reiterating the questions, I was responding to what they had told me, which was, they knew nothing about our Sibolo summer nights. So that's why you got the response that you have. You'll see, hey, I'm interested, how do I proceed? Those responses that you see are responses from people who did not know of the event.
I understand what you're saying. What you're saying is you went and you talked to each of them. Then after that event, and they, they said, well, I didn't know about that event, then you sent the information out. And that, these are their responses.
Yes.
Okay, got it, all right. Jeff McLaughlin, you're recognized.
So this is just clarification for anybody, unless Sibolo's operating on some antiquated program. When you save an email as a PDF, it saves the entire email chain. So whatever Mr. Howard sent to these vendors, we will be able to see as well as a response from the vendors.
I'll make sure. So again, that's the vendor feedback from the email that went out detailing the splash bash event, which many of them said they had no idea about, they did not know. And this was one of the responses from a resident who took part in the event. So for those who, because I know the video was extremely low, for those who did not know, this resident was a resident who, while I was at the event, I was engaging with residents while engaging with the vendors. And this resident came up to me, he asked, was I in charge, was I overseeing the event? I said, yes, I was. And as we started talking, he shared his experience at the event. As, as I said, prior to the splash bash, we never sent out any information to the vendors who were also participating in the market days. I don't know why that was the case, but I saw it as an opportunity, so that's why I shared that information with them. Because again, they were participating in a five hour event, only seeing a hundred to a hundred and fifty people. The splash bash on average has about five to six hundred people and they are growing. So if you are a business owner or a vendor, that is something that you would want to be a part of. The splash bash event is from six thirty to nine, that's two and a half hours. So as a vendor, if I'm going to see five to six hundred residents in a two and a half hour timeframe versus being, seeing a hundred to a hundred and fifty over five hours, we're trading time for money.
Yeah, I agree, it's more bang for their buck, you know? It, it makes more sense for them to be out there during that timeframe.
So-
It's not really a disagreement as to that issue. The disagreement comes into, now you have vendors that, if they can't get there on a Friday night, was that discussed at all? Who knows? So that's, that's-
So, so we'll, we'll, we'll get to, we'll get to that. So on this slide here, what you'll see is here's some of the changes that were made at the completion of our Sibolo summer nights event. So essentially, after our downtown market, which was in November, here's some of the proposed changes that I brought up and that was discussed with staff. I talked with Jeanette, I talked with our permitting department so we can streamline our application process. One of the areas of opportunity that I noticed was for our Sibolo summer nights, I mean, I'm sorry, for our market days, the application for the next market day did not open until the market day had ended. So if we had a market day in July and we had one in August, you could not sign up for August until July was closed. So we opened up the market, we opened up the application process for vendors to be able to properly plan and sign up for all the events, all at one setting. We made, not only did we do that, we made it free, but we also said that, you know what? We're going to provide an incentive to vendors who are committed to being a part of our community and giving back and being a part of our events. We're going to give them a discount for Sibolo Fest if they are a part of three of the five events.
I'll add, Mr. Howard, that whenever the former mayor and I started this, this summer night stuff, we would have vendors on certain ones. And they worked out great because we put them along the front, all the way across. People would enjoy that while their kids are over there playing. So I think this is great that you're doing it this way. I know some people have, are disgruntled about it, but I like it because it doesn't block Main Street off on a Saturday. I mean, maybe if we look at ever going back to doing that on a Saturday, put it down File Road. But I'll let you get back to the presentation.
So I appreciate that feedback because prior to making these changes, while staff was working internally trying to vet the process, I went to each one of the businesses on the downtown area. And to be more specifically, all of the businesses directly impacted by the market days. So those are the businesses that are between Loop five thirty nine and File Road. I not only spoke with them, I got each one of the business owners' cards. And here's some of the responses that they gave. I did not put, I did not put a name to, or a business name to the responses because I did not think that that would be fair to those businesses. So after doing all of that, an email went out in early twenty twenty five. Again, I have all of those emails, I will produce all of those emails. And it will also show the number of people that it went to. This time, and what we did was, not only did we send it to all of the vendors, but I got with the economic development department. I pulled all of the business owners within the city of Sibolo's city limits. Not only did I do that, I also went to the HOA departments, the HOA websites, and I pulled all of the HOAs, not only here in Sibolo, but also here in Shirts. That you will see on the email chain and the email thread. And when I sent that email out, the first initial email was simply just to say, hey, our events, here's the dates for our events. And here's some of the proposed changes that we're making. So again, what you will see from the email chains is that an email went out before we even brought the application open. And we shared it to over seven hundred emails, business owners, vendors, HOAs, all of the above. And we said, here's our proposed changes. Here was the feedback. Of the seven hundred plus, no one shared, hey, we don't like this. Hey, we want to, we want to go back to Saturdays. Hey, this is a terrible idea. I know an email went to one of the council members saying how they were just a little frustrated about the changes. You will see on that email chain, that person was on the email chain the very first time when the proposed changes were going out. And no one said anything. So that was the first email that went out. A second email went out, which you will detail, which I will detail, and I will, again, share all of that information. A second email went out and that second email went out and it said, hey, applications are open, guys, go ahead and sign up. As of April thirtieth, here's our numbers. If you think back to the beginning of my presentation, I said the average amount for our vendors and our participation from vendors was fifteen vendors per event. As of April thirtieth, that's what our numbers are. And as of today, for May, which was our touch a truck, we had twenty seven signed up, but because of the rain out and we lost a few because us, because we had to change a different date. But again, all of this information you can pull because it's now in our NGO and you will be able to see it. We have twenty nine vendors signed up for our kids fishing event. We paired that with our children's market, the children's market has thirty one vendors signed up. That's sixty vendors for our kids fishing event. For July, we have twenty one vendors signed up. For August, we have twenty two vendors signed up. So just by simply making those small changes, we've already changed the amount of vendors that show up to our events. So for those who may have the complaint, and I understand your concerns of, hey, some people may not be able to make it on a Friday. What we did to combat that was we made sure that we opened the whole application of the calendar up so everyone could plan accordingly. But again, the numbers have shown that we have not only increased our number of vendors for our events. But we're making it even more of a full body event for residents to be able to go and do other things at events like our kids fishing event where we have a long line, where residents have to sit and wait in line. We're doing things to make the events more interactive and to make it more for our residents to be able to do. But also be able to make it more beneficial for our vendors to be able to be a part of. So I got with city leadership, I spoke with Jeanette, Mr. Huggins, Mr. Reed, Julio, and we talked about, hey, what's the information that we really want to capture? What type of information would council really like to see to be able to truly vet if this change was worth making? Here's some of the questions that we came up with. I'll give you a second to look through those questions. Also, I did scan in those responses from the vendors that were at our touch a truck. I can produce those and I can share those with you before I leave, if that's what you would like. I would also like to clarify, if you look at question number three, I did make a change to question number three moving forward. Because as vendors was filling it out, they said they were a little confused of whether it should be a Friday or a Saturday. In terms of, the question just reads, do you prefer Friday or Saturday, yes or no? Many of them just simply circled the day that they want, but I changed it to be more specific so it can be more user friendly. Here's a few more of those questions. Last, last few of those questions. And before we get to this, I would like to share this. Because of the changes that we made, not only did our vendors have a really good time, you can look on Facebooks, many of them wrote positive messages on Facebook. But if you reach out to Ty and Go, Ty and Go not only came and thanked me personally, but what they said was, hey- but what they said was, hey, by being a part of this event, we were invited to be a part of two more HOA events that we would have never even found out about had we not been at this event. Well, if you look, Ty and Go originally only signed up for one event. Since this event, we have had five more people sign up for our Siblo Summer Nights. And Ty and Go not only signed up for our kids fishing event, but they've signed up for the rest of the events.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, so, um, with the conclusion of my, um, presentation, if there's any questions, please let me know. I would love to be able to answer those questions. Ms. Roberts, I will make sure that you have every one of those emails and it'll also show in detail who those emails went out to. So that way, if someone, a previous vendor says, hey, look, I didn't get that, if they were on our previous vendor list, you'll be able to see if they got that, but you'll also be able to see the number of HOAs and the number of businesses that received those emails.
Yeah, I'd like to see the HOAs because I'm the president of my HOA and I know I didn't get anything. But we will see the email.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you could also send us the answers to these questions that you have listed here, I would appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Katie Cunningham.
So I think that some of the confusion comes with the purpose of, of the, uh, Main Street Market.
Yes.
The original purpose was to drive traffic downtown for business, to get people to come downtown on the weekends, to shop our businesses, to eat at the restaurants downtown and all of that. So that was the original purpose of Market Days.
Yes.
Um, I understand that with this shift, this is more of a vendor focused shift where we're trying to get the vendors more traffic. It makes sense for them to be at Siblo Summer Nights because we get more traffic at Siblo Summer Nights. I understand the logic side of that. But the purpose of Siblo, the Market Days was to get traffic downtown on Saturdays. So now we've just lost that with, and I know the traffic was minimal, but we've lost that opportunity. So we've moved away from what the original intent was. Um, I, 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 I understand that. I would like to kind of reevaluate this at some point and see what was done to advertise Siblo Market Days. What, what did we try to do to get the traffic up for that? At the beginning, there's always a hype. People show up because it's something new, it's something exciting. Um, the farmer's market in New Braunfels, super, super popular. We can't really compare ourselves to a very established farmer's market. That's a weekly market, but they have events and things there. They have like a little game area for kids. They have, um, uh, they had a photo booth one time. They have live music. They have a lot of different things that our market day has had in the past, but I don't know if that's tapered off, um, or not. Kid performances, everyone, all these dance studios and everything, it's hard to rent a stage, but if you can do your annual performance out at Market Days or like we do it at the, um, the Christmas parade, we have the guitar players, that may be an option too, because all those families will come down to watch their kids. There are going to be grandmas, grandpas, aunts, uncles, everyone to come down and do that. Um, we lived in Paris, Texas for a while. I've brought this example up probably ten times, so I'm sorry if y'all are hearing this again. But when we lived in Paris, yeah, I'm sure, when we lived in Paris, Texas, they did an event starting at Thanksgiving where, um, all the small, all the small businesses and the little pop-up booths at the farmer's market that was downtown, they'd all get tickets. And if you bought ten dollars worth of stuff, you got a ticket, a raffle ticket. And then before Christmas, there was a big raffle and it was for like ten thousand dollars, something crazy. And there were, Paris was only maybe twenty thousand people. We'd have at least that downtown with people packed, trying to win this ten thousand dollar prize every year. It drove a lot of people to shop small businesses. It drove a lot of people to Paris from the surrounding communities. Um, and it was, it was fun for the small businesses to kind of be a part of the, the hype. So that may be something that we could implement into Market Days. I think that Market Days, because it was to drive economic development, it was put on the Parks Department to host and to set up. But I think it needs to be more of a partnership with economic development. Because it is, it, the original intent was to drive that foot traffic downtown to try to get those small businesses, um, seen, to try to get the vendor seen. If we have successful vendors at these things, then they may, that may turn into a small business where they want to open a storefront. Um, or they could do a space sharing agreement. I don't know what they want to do, but I think that this does need to, I think there is a spot for Market Days. I think that there, if it's not Market Days, there's something that we do once a month on a Saturday to drive that traffic because that was the goal, was to bring people downtown on Saturdays to try to drive that foot traffic for economic development. The vendors during Siblo Summer Nights, like Joel was saying, when we were doing the original Summer Nights, we had tons of vendors. Um, that was kind of the thing, the vendors would sponsor different activities and that's how we got it done for free before the city took over. So it makes total sense to me, I understand it, but I do, I don't want to lose focus of why we had it in the, why we had the Market Days on Saturdays in the first place.
So, um, if you don't mind me, um, stepping in. So with that understanding, that was one of the very first things, and I asked what the intent was behind the event. So prior to making any changes, I would like council to know that was what my, uh, what my main focus was, to understand what the intent behind the event was. Because like you said, usually if you understand the intent, you have a better understanding of why something is in place. So when we, when I was discussing some of the changes, that was the main reason why I went to the businesses. So if it is something that council would like to consider doing moving forward, I would recommend bringing in those downtown businesses. I don't know if they're still the same business owners of those businesses, but it's very important to ask them and that's why I went and talked to them. Many of them were very excited about the, it moving because it impacted their business. It impacted a lot of their foot traffic. It impacted where their, um, where their, um, where the people who visited their businesses could be able to come and park it. This, these were not responses that I am just fabricating. These are responses that I had directly from the owners of these businesses. So if this is going to be something that the council does pursue, maybe, maybe it is another way, um, like Councilman Hicks, maybe changing it or shifting it down a different road that's maybe near downtown, but actually not downtown, um, and to the point where it is, um, blocking off streets and impacting the parking. But I think a really big part of this that's a missing piece that the council has to, that really take into consideration is what do the downtown businesses actually want? Because if we're promoting or trying to bring attention to the downtown area, but the actual people, the stakeholders of the downtown are saying, hey, yeah, no, we don't want this, then I think we got to also take that into consideration as well.
I think that's really valuable insight and since we're doing our downtown, um, comprehensive plan, we're starting to work on that. I think that this is something we should include in that. There's, there's supposed to be focus groups and things like that that include businesses, that include downtown residents. Um, I think that this would, that would be a very good place to start getting that feedback on it. I don't think it's probably a bad idea to pause the Siblo Market Days this year, um, because the traffic is down, all of that. And with the master plan coming out, I think it makes sense. We can revamp, rebrand next year if this is something that, um, is found to be valuable moving forward. But, um, yeah, it's, I, I want to make sure that we're not missing out on any economic development.
I completely agree.
Uh, assistance that we can provide through these events. But I do, I, I understand why moving the vendors to Siblo Summer Nights was a, a, a part of the thought process.
When it comes to economic development, that's another reason why I paired these events together because as a business owner or as a resident, if you own a business and you see these type of events that are going on and you see this type of foot traffic at these events, it would make someone more inclined to say, man, I would love to be a part of this type of community or love to be a part of this. It's the reason why after having this event, our touch a truck, we got more people that signed up for the event. It's the reason why, um, I did something like this because when business owners see this type of, um, impact, you can look and you can do research. It is, any city that has focused or put a focus on sports and tourism has already, has, has exploded. And that's the reason why I tried to pair these things together because I want to be able to show not just the residents, but business owners and vendors the type of events that the city of Siblo could put on to make it more of, more of a desirable or to, um, really live up to that city of choice mindset.
Joel.
I did, um, I did hear from a couple of businesses down here, because I live in downtown, um, that it was hindering their business barber shop. They couldn't get their regular Saturday customers, couldn't go, I mean, if they're disabled, you should know this. They weren't able to park to where they could get into, um, the barber shop. We've got two barber shops down there now. Wife's jeweler, you, you know, Wife's Jewellers, you know, she was having, she'd have to close down. So I, I, I hear you and I heard you, but that's why I would suggest that if you bring that back, put it down File Road. That's my two cents.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay, Councilmember Money.
Just like to second that, what Mr. Hicks says about File Road, I think that's a, a good experiment. Give that a try because I kind of, uh, detest the way we block off Main Street, whether it's daytime or nighttime. That is so annoying trying to, you know, interfering with traffic. And also this last, uh, Friday night when we did the touch a truck, I don't know if anybody else here was caught up in the traffic. That I was, but Main Street, at about the time that that event started, was backed up all the way to HEB. Not because of the event, but that was a factor in it, I'm sure.
Okay. All right, so no vote needed on this? This is just a debrief, right?
Mayor and council, I'd like to go around the dais and make sure that we're okay, particularly with question number two. Are you supporting combining the Market Days and Siblo Summer Nights in this summer twenty twenty-five?
It sounds like we've already decided to do that, right?
Well, I'm just making sure we have clear direction.
Okay, anybody opposed to that?
Well, I, I originally had stated before in the past that I liked its contin- continuation to be downtown because like Miss Cunningham mentioned, it was to really bring some, you know, focus to downtown. Um, I do understand the attempt during the summer nights. I'm kind of thinking, why not do both? You know, um, I mean, it generates, it stimulates, um, engagement downtown and it also stimulates the summer nights. I'm pretty sure we have plenty of vendors depending on that, what if they miss summer nights, but then they can still depend on downtown. So that's definitely an option.
There is another market that's every other Sunday. It's two Sundays a month, um, at the Grange.
Yes.
And so that may also be something that could be incorporated in. Maybe we pass the baton and we work within on coordinating a time that works for our vendors. Um, so I, I don't think that, I don't think that the city's the be all end all. I don't think we have to organize every single event that goes on in the entire city. I think we have a lot of people who are very capable, very good at what they do and have a very specific niche that they're experts in. And we need to utilize those people. Um, but yeah, I, I, I agree. I think that I would like to see some kind of farmer's market. Do I think it needs to be Siblo Market Days? Do I think we could use another farmer's market? Maybe. So just things to consider for the next.
Before I go, I would also like to say that I, um, I've already emailed those survey responses to Mr. Reed. He'll get that, um, to you, um, um, when he, um, gets a chance. Um, and I believe he, you already have the previous emails on hand as well, so, um, he will be to get that information over to you guys.
And David Howard, as far as the, uh, farmer's market, there's also one over there that happens on Thursday afternoons at the Grange. And maybe that's somebody that you could just talk to them and say, hey, why don't you all come out here to File Road on the weekends and join the far, you know, the, the market? You know? Is that what they did? Okay. I remember it used to be Thursdays, but I don't know, yeah. Did they move it? Okay. It's been a while since I've gone. Okay. All right. Thank you very much, David Howard.
Thank you.
Your help, sir. All right, next up is discussion on streets, DCM update, Mr. Otto.
So the streets DCM update, um, back on September twenty-fourth, I had presented this to y'all previously. At that meeting, um, I received direction from council that we wanted to go with thirty-two foot streets. Most of council wanted thirty-two feet, which would allow for parking on both sides of this street and, and for an emergency vehicle to go down the center. Um, and then council also supported changing the pavement standard to five hundred thousand easels, uh, for residential streets. The intent tonight is just to present y'all with what we've done in your packet. You should have the full DCM, um, for you to read in your spare time. Um, and we'll come back, um, at, you know, a future meeting to actually adopt it. But I just wanted to give you all an overview of where we stand and what we've done. Um, so why are we doing this? We've been through this before. You know, why are we changing the standards? What are the outcomes we're looking for? We're going to review the current standards, uh, the revised street standard and then recommend pavement, uh, specs. Uh, the last update to the streets DCM was in twenty-ten. Most of those standards were based off of two thousand and eight City of San Antonio specs. Um, Tech dot has recently updated their specifications last year and City of San Antonio is still working on theirs. New subdivisions have had pavement failures, uh, prior to maintenance period ending. There was very rapid degradation of the streets. Uh, and a lot of those are being designed as local aid without bus traffic, um, in these residential areas. Um, we want to coordinate the UDC updates that are currently happening with the DCM, uh, consolidate the engineering specs into the DCM and then keep the lot design standards in the UDC. And we want to ensure that new streets in Siblo are designed to last. I should, designed and constructed to last. So we're looking for increased life expectancy, um, identify and strengthen the maintenance applications. Um, Siblo, as we all know, has some of the worst soils in Texas and so we need to design our streets accordingly. Um, we want to be able to get fire trucks down the road and again, we want to maintain that fifty-foot rideaway per state law so we can avoid, uh, wireless telecommution, telecommunications facilities or WTFs. Why do we have a DCM? To provide a standard so when developers come into town, they know what to expect and, you know, um, in the streets. Um, chapter, or section one is the geom- geometric street design and repair parameters. Section two is the driveway approaches and section four is pedestrian and bicycle facilities. Street width, the part y'all want to hear. Um, currently the standards are thirty-two foot pavement and a fifty-foot rideaway with a five-foot sidewalk separated are divorced from the curb by two feet. Um, and parking is allowed on both sides. We've all seen it. That doesn't leave enough room for an emergency vehicle unless the cars are really hugging the curbs, which they rarely do. Um, the two thousand and one international fire code says you have to have thirty-two feet in order to park on both sides of the street. Otherwise, you have to have no parking signs on one side of the road. And we don't want to do no parking signs. These pictures represent, uh, different pavement sections that are out there in the wild right now. You got the thirty-two foot, or thirty-foot street in the top left, um, the thirty-two in the middle and then forty on the far right. And obviously forty provides a lot more room, but in a residential area, forty also promotes speeding. Um, and so it's a balancing act. You know, we want to keep the street narrow enough so that it's uncomfortable to speed, but wide enough that a fire truck can get through. Um, so my recommendation was thirty-two foot with no, no, no parking signs and a five-foot sidewalk married to the curb. Um, the married to the curb part is important for the, the life of the street. By marrying the curb and the sidewalk, there's less opportunity for water to infiltrate underneath the pavement, which will extend the pavement life. These are the existing road standards. I'm not going to go through these in detail because we all have seen this before, but this is what a typical street section looks like with thirty-foot and a divorced, uh, sidewalk. This is the proposed standards, which y'all saw last time. Um, and this shows a thirty-two foot pavement section with a five-foot sidewalk married to the curb. Um, and what this does, it does allow us four feet outside of the sidewalk to the proper. And what this does, it does allow us four feet outside of the sidewalk to the property line to provide for meter box, water meter boxes and utilities. On rural streets, we are proposing to do 11-foot lanes with two-foot shoulders. And the key feature here is that we would have a header curb along the pavement edge. The header curb will help keep the pavement in place. Rural roads often have severe edge failure. When people are passing each other, they shift to one side. As they run over that edge, it starts to collapse. As water gets in there, it collapses even more rapidly. Header curb helps prevent that. I think I mentioned last time, we just recently did this in Cibolo on six miles of road. Now, they've only been on the ground for a year and a half, but they're holding up very well. Ribbon and header are basically the same thing. Ribbon curb is wider and shallower. A header curb is deeper.
Was that on Lower Seguin that you did that? The six miles you just mentioned?
I'm sorry?
Did you do it on Lower Seguin Road, that, that new road that was over there? It doesn't have the header curb?
We did a curb on one street.
We, we added ribbon curb on the Green Valley.
Is that Green Valley?
It was on Green Valley.
Green Valley. That's where I saw it. Okay. That's where it was. Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Otto, I was traveling in New Braunfels in the rural area, and I noticed that their, some of their roads in the rural area, they didn't have like a curb, how you called it? What did you call it? It was a
A header curb?
A header, yeah, ribbon, but it was somewhat of a, of a round that that, is that what the ribbon curb is?
If it stood up, it was probably a rollover curb. So a rollover curb is going to be like three inches higher than the pavement. It's got a smooth transition so you can drive over it in a car.
It's round. It, well, it looked like it was, it served as a sidewalk type of area too because it was pretty quite wide. Yeah, it was about like two, you know, like two feet. I guess that because rural roads usually don't have sidewalks and usually people are running or, you know, sometimes you'd find them walking. I just wasn't sure why they, how that option got installed and if that was something we would consider.
A, a rollover curb is typically 18 inches wide and to provide a smooth transition from flush with the pavement up three inches.
What's the benefit of that?
Typically, you put those in places where you know people are going to drive over the curb. On the inside of a roundabout, you'll typically put rollover curbs because as trucks go through pulling a trailer, the trailer's going to roll up over the curb. And so you don't want a stand-up curb because then it, it could damage a trailer, cause an accident. The curb is going to break if it gets hit frequently enough. Whereas a rollover curb, it's meant to be run over. That's usually where you see them is in, is in the center of a roundabout, or if you've got an area where you're going to have off-street parking. Like in, in Chavano Park right now, we're doing Days of Valla Road. We do have rollover curb on Days of Valla because for their events, they're going to have head-in parking off of Days of Valla where people just pull off the road and park on the side of the road. That's why we did the rollover curb there. So moving on to the right-of-way widths considerations, we've discussed this before. Per Texas Government Code, section 284.104, if the right-of-way is less than 50 feet, we can prevent wireless transmission facilities. Once you go to 51 feet, then they can put them in and you can't stop them. You can put reasonable restrictions on them, but you cannot stop them. So we, we do want to keep 50 feet because
So wait, you're, you're saying if we go lower than 50, then they can start putting these up?
No, if you go higher. If you go to 51 feet, they can start putting them in.
Ah, okay.
And Mr. Otto, can I just add?
Yes.
Those are pictures from Cibolo where a particular telecommunications company installed it without permits. We called them into a meeting with, they had their fancy attorneys. And once we pointed out the state law, their attorneys turned to the executive, said they're right. They removed them.
So, so what is the thinking?
As long as that law remains in place, we have something to keep them.
What, what is the thinking behind that as far as if it's wider than 50, then they need those? I don't
Well, it's, it's the state law. They, state law said if it's less than 50, 50 feet or less, you can prohibit them. But over 50 feet, you can't prohibit them, but you can put reasonable restrictions.
Okay.
And so, like you said, this is an example in Cibolo. This is a 50-foot right-of-way. They stuck it in and we forced them to remove it. Residents really do not like these in their neighborhoods. If you look at that box, there's a little white sticker on there. That little white sticker says something about radioactivity is known to cause cancer in the state of California. And so people freak out when they see those.
Yeah.
You don't want them in residential areas.
So that's like a cell phone repeater thing?
It's, it's a micro tower is what it is.
How do we get the ones that look like trees? They don't really look like trees, but my kids think they're hilarious. How do we get them to disguise them? Is that for the DCM?
I, probably not through the DCM.
I don't want them in the city anyway, but if they're going to put them in, at least make it look funny.
I, I, I've seen, I've seen those outside of Texas. I can't say that I've ever seen one disguised as a tree in Texas.
There's one on 35 behind the Chuck E. Cheese at 1604. Yeah, there's several. They look so funny. There's a couple in New Braunfels, yeah.
I apparently just don't pay attention when I'm driving.
They're camouflaged.
That's, that's it.
All right. All right. So keep it going. What, what else do we got?
Payment specifications. We're moving section 18.7 sidewalks into the DCM that specifies location and width, which we have on this table right here on the far right-hand column. It says if sidewalk is allowed and what size it needs to be. The structural number we talked about, it was 100,000 for a type A. We are bumping up to 500,000 easels, so it's, it'll be a more rigid pavement structure that can withstand the concrete trucks and asphalt trucks and roofing trucks and everything else that comes into play during construction of a neighborhood. And then the TIA, we were requiring TIA's at 100 peak hour trips. LAN, I'm sorry, I got that backwards. We're going from 76 to 100. And that was one of LAN's recommendations. So staff recommendation is adopt the street design criteria manual as presented in y'all's packet. And I'll take any questions.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll just go around and, and then we'll take a vote. So we'll start with you, Joel. Any questions?
I have any questions, but I still would prefer the 36-foot ride-wide.
Don't add it? Nothing from you. Katie, anything else? Money? Yeah, same here. Good. Jeff? Okay. All right. Call for a motion, please.
There, there's no action on this item.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's right. This one's just discussion. Okay.
I'll, I'll bring it back in two weeks or a month.
Okay, sorry. I, I, I saw the very last slide. It said a recommendation of the adoption. So you'll, you'll bring back a ordinance?
Yeah, I'll bring it. Can we get an ordinance prepared by next meeting? I'll bring it back in two weeks.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Chris. Next up is 12D, discussion action on an all-way stop on Main Street and Santa Clara. Councilman Hicks.
I'll break this forth because like Mr. Mahoney said earlier, get traffic backed up all the way to HEB makes it very difficult for the 15 homes that are stuck back by where I live to even get out in traffic. We have no way to get out in traffic. It makes it very difficult. And so my suggestion is, I don't know how many times I've almost been rear-ended trying to turn into that area because people aren't paying attention. But a stop sign, I mean, we've got two three-way stops on File Road that I think are ridiculous. I've had a lot of people complain about them, but they're there for, for safety, but this would be a safety issue.
Okay. And I think there are requirements in order to add a stop sign as far as the, I think the traffic study needs to be done in order to add a stop sign.
Yes, we would have to do a warrant analysis, which involves doing traffic counts and various other items we have to research to, to determine if the all-way signal or always-stop signs is warranted.
Yeah, okay. And, and is it like this 24/7 at all times?
All during the day. Now, whenever
Is it during peak traffic times or, or like, like right now? I mean, is there going to be?
There ain't going to be a problem right now, but throughout the day, any time of the day.
So. Microphone.
Anything that you might call rush hour. I've driven by there and seen people waiting on Santa Clara. They cannot come out and make a left turn. Just, they just can't unless some kind soul stops and makes room for them.
So doing the traffic study for Buffalo Crossing was really educational. There's a certain threshold you have to meet in order to get a stop sign. And Buffalo Crossing, that road has tons and tons and tons and tons of people who cut through there to get to Steel during the day. The cross-traffic in the neighborhood, the, for the streets that cross Buffalo Crossing, there's a lot of people who live there. That's, none of those intersections qualified for the traffic count because it's not just one way and it's not just one hour. It's both directions for a certain number of hours. It has to be fairly consistent. And I really struggle to see that, to even believe that Main Street, as busy as it is, I don't think Main Street may have enough traffic, but Santa Clara, I don't see that Santa Clara would have enough traffic.
We already have a stop sign. I'm talking about putting the stop signs on Main Street.
You have to have it both ways to put in a four-way stop because like Flint and Fritz, those, how many, you guys have like 900 houses in Buffalo Crossing?
That's only 500.
500?
But
But that's still 500 houses that are probably 100, 120 houses that are feeding out onto Flint or Fritz or however you say that, L1.
Uh, leak.
Leak. Leak. And not one of those qualified for the amount of traffic needed to put a stop sign on Buffalo Crossing. There are stop signs on those. But there's not one on Buffalo Crossing and we couldn't get it to work, so.
Because there was plenty of traffic going down Buffalo Crossing Drive, but the cross tra, the cross streets, they did, the, the number of cars that were required didn't meet. So I don't know that, that
So the cost of doing the traffic study, what was it, 5,000? I know I saw that, that cost advertised earlier for the one over by Everyday Way.
Yes, I wanted to remind council, you previously authorized a warrant analysis of the Everyday Way, Cibolo Valley Drive. Mr. Otto's office is working on that one. That's what, the ballpark of what this one would be too. And I think that's what Mr. Hicks is asking. Would council authorize the study?
Okay. So if we're going to, if we're going to authorize spending $5,000 to something that we know will probably not reach the threshold because you said that the ones in Buffalo Crossing wouldn't, is that a wise use of $5,000?
I would defer to Chris Otto. I won't make that statement to you, but Chris Otto?
I'm sorry?
Based upon your general knowledge of how busy Main Street is during peak hours and the difficulty that Mr. Hicks is expressing to the council, what are your general thoughts of some of the warrants that could be met at, at this location during those peak hours?
It is very unlikely to meet warrant based on traffic counts. Now, if there's a crash history or significant pedestrians, then that may trigger it. But I'm, I'm not aware of a crash history at that intersection, but we can do our research and verify.
Okay.
Get passed because they don't, they don't want to wait. That's a bus stop at that corner.
Could we do something short of a warrant analysis and just look at, we'll ask PD for any accident records? We could do some observations around pedestrian activity, not a full-blown analysis, and maybe just bring that back to council?
What pedestrian activity would you be talking about?
Would that be something that council allows to do initially?
Councilman Mahoney, go ahead.
Well, one, one more point I'd just like to ask, since you brought up pedestrians, is the proximity of those crosswalks right over here near closer to the railroad? Are those close enough to be a part of the factoring in the, in the analysis? Because there is pedestrian traffic this way, this side of Santa Clara, in and out of that parking lot.
It would depend on the amount of pedestrians crossing Everyday Way or Main Street at that intersection.
And Mr. Hicks, you're right. You can call for, for that motion on, on this item. I did not mean to undermine that intent right there. I was just trying to
I'll make a motion to ask for a study for an all-way stop on Main Street and Santa Clara.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Please vote on your screens. Norma. Motion carries three or four, two, three. And so that is the, to do the study, right? Okay. Gotcha. Correct.
Is it any more expensive to do a traffic study of another intersection on Main Street? Is that an extra expense?
It would be an additional expense. I don't think it would be double.
But it would be a little bit additional.
But it would be additional because we're going to get additional counts and, and look at the second intersection. I mean, it, you know, I don't think it'd be 10,000. It might be 8,500.
Okay. I was just trying to see if we could get more bang for the buck.
And mayor and council, I just want to remind you, like the previous warrant study and the budget, you allowed us to use ARPA funds for the Shirts ILA concerning dispatch. And we put back into the general fund, just let the money fall to the bottom line, about $230,000. So we said we would not spend that money unless you authorized it. We used that pot of money for the $5,000 for the previous traffic study, and I'm just reminding you tonight, this will be the second dip into that, roughly $230,000. That money is still sitting there until you tell us otherwise.
Okay. And then the results of that study will be presented to us someday in the future?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. Let's move on. E, discussion action on the subcommittees and subcommittee appointments. Councilwoman Cunningham?
So this is kind of a two-piece thing. So the CIP committee, we got an email from our attorney with some legal opinions on the subcommittees. There was a question about CIP because when I went back and watched the video from that meeting for another reason, I noticed that we did not appoint Mark to CIP. The attorney said that since we never removed anyone from the CIP, technically Mark and Joel are both still on the CIP subcommittee. So instead of adding Mark to the CIP subcommittee, I think we need to remove Joel from the CIP subcommittee.
I'm fine with that, and I'll make a motion to remove him because I, I told everybody I didn't want to be on it.
I think that would also go the same for the ordinance because we didn't remove anyone from the prior ordinance committee. And we just, it kind of just started a whole new thing. So we need to go back and
No, that's fine with me too. So I'll second Joel's motion. I was on the ordinance subcommittee and I don't think I was removed from it.
No.
So there's a motion on the table for, for Joel to recuse himself or remove himself
Remove myself, yes.
From the CIP subcommittee. Please vote.
Second.
And it was seconded by?
One of us, yeah.
Motion carries seven, zero. Okay. And then
I'll make a motion to remove myself from the ordinance subcommittee.
Okay. Motion and second. Please vote on screens for the removal of Katie from the ordinance subcommittee.
I think those were the only two that were impacted. And then my second part of this item has to do with the subcommittees. So when we were discussing the subcommittees originally, there was discussion about a subcommittee to work on the code of conduct, on council policies and on the appointments of people to sub, to our committees. So the appointment, appointments of residents to committees. I think that in the mix of everything that was being discussed that night, the council policy portion of that got lost. I was under the impression that when we created that sub- I was under the impression that when we created that subcommittee, it included the policy for appointing people to subcommittees and the creation and revamping of council policies. We've had a lot of issues recently, I mean honestly, in the last three plus years where we don't have anything written down. We don't have procedures written down. We don't have a policy written down on how we do things. Most recently, it popped up when we were appointing people to the charter review committee. And we were talking about, well, they're on other committees already. How many committees max can you be on? Well, we don't have a policy for that. We don't have a policy for how many training. How often can you go to a training as a council member? How much? I proposed a training policy a while ago and never got implemented. I proposed a travel policy. You can't go out of the state more than once every three years because those get pricey, things like that. So I would like to, and I'm open for discussion on this one. I think that the current subcommittee for the interview committee for council or for committee members was. Was it you? It's you and Jeff. You, Jeff and Mahoney. So if y'all are willing to, we can expand the role of that committee or we can create a second subcommittee to go over the council policies. But I think there's just been a lot of back and forth uncertainty. Oh, another thing that came up, reading of emails. That was brought up at the last council meeting. Council members reading emails from the public as opposed to making sure that the city secretary is the one reading it. That could very easily be a council policy. We don't have anything written on that right now, so it's.
Well, it's in the charter that says that they can.
So I mean, like if these are things that are coming up that are causing contention, I think that it's a good time to review the policies and have a subcommittee review them, write new ones, propose new ones, and then bring them back to council for us.
You're hitting on both of my two different discussion items coming up, so.
So, yeah, because one of them has to do with that discussion on council directive policy, you know, those numbers. And so maybe that's another item, Joel, that this subcommittee could take a look at, you know, and then make changes to it. No, that's fine. So do you want to make a motion to have that subcommittee take a look at this?
I don't wanna pin more on that subcommittee that already exists without getting the feedback from those subcommittee members.
I would suggest that we have a subcommittee and I'd be willing to get on that one for policy, for council policy.
So your suggestion is to create a new subcommittee that takes a look at council policies?
The council policy and get something done.
What do y'all think?
Wouldn't y'all wanna be on it?
Would y'all rather keep it with the other group?
I mean, I don't. I don't really have a strong opinion one way or the other. There's pros to combining them. They are separate though in nature, so having a focused subcommittee is also beneficial, but whatever council wants to do, I don't.
That's what I'm saying. It's focused on one thing whereas them and their interviews is a different thing.
I think the policy for the boards and commissions though, it would be in line with understanding the new rewrite. So it would be done in tandem or in conjunction with that, which I've already been reviewing that policy just as well. But with everything that's been going on, I'm ready to see about getting together with the subcommittee for our interview committee so we can solidify that. And then if.
Paul, did you have a statement?
I just had a comment to make clear. The opinion that I shared was related directly to city council subcommittees. There are committees that are the cities, I don't mean city committees to be rhyming too much, but there is a definite, there's a difference between commissions, boards, committees, so forth, as compared to subcommittees of the city council, which is limited to members.
So we need to.
You would separate them out?
I just needed to make that clear because I was thinking about it after I sent it and I was wondering if I made that clear enough.
That's how I understood it, was you were talking about the subcommittees. So I think that based on that feedback anyway, I think it'd probably be a good idea to have a separate subcommittee. And Joel and Donetta already volunteered. Does one of y'all wanna?
I would like to also, working in tandem with the other one.
And then those would be brought back to council to vote on. So I'll make a motion to form, I don't even know what to call it, council. Council Policy Subcommittee.
Council.
With Joel, Donetta and Norma.
Council Directive Policy Subcommittee. I'll second it, Norma, or Katie.
Donetta, Norma, Joel.
So there's a motion on the floor? Okay. Well, it looks like it's got four votes. They created a subcommittee with Donetta, Joel and Norma for the city council directive policy. Okay, next up is discussion action regarding the interpretation of the city charter. Councilman Hicks.
I just bring this up. I know it got canned a couple of times. I just, I think everybody up her nose, I mean, when you took the oath of office, you took the oath of office to adhere and uphold our city charter. Because you took the oath of office to uphold the United States Constitution, the Texas Constitution. And our constitution is our city charter. And I just want to make sure everybody understands that, that, you know, the city charter is something that we've got to uphold. And we've got to make sure that we're going by it and doing the right thing. And then I just wanted to, you know, you kept putting it off and saying, no, no, no. And that's all I was wanting to say on this was to make sure that we all took an oath.
Right.
And that oath of office told us that we have to abide by that city charter. So that's basically all I have as far as discussion on this item. Just know that, you know, that's our constitution of this city and we need to adhere to it. And if you don't know it, you need to pick it up. It's a few hundred pages. Read through it, read through it thoroughly. And if you got questions, call Paul. He can answer it for you. But we need to make sure that we're adhering to our, basically our constitution, our charter. And I'll hit on the others stuff on Jay, so that's all I've got.
I just wanna add to this too. Just to be clear, I don't think any of us got on council to intentionally violate the charter ever. I don't think that was anyone's goal. I think we all took our oath very seriously. If you didn't, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say that you did. I think we all took it seriously. We all take our job seriously. We wanna do its best and sometimes that doesn't always, we don't have unanimous council. I've said this a thousand times. It's a good thing that we don't always agree. I think that the way that we disagree could be worked on, obviously. But having councils that vote unanimously, that have groupthink, that don't speak out, that the council meetings are done in fifteen minutes because everyone's just blindly approving everything, that doesn't benefit the city. Not one of us has the same background or experience. That makes us stronger. I know that there's been a lot of contention in the last few months, a lot of accusations, a lot of back and forth and just stuff. I wanna make, we've heard it from the public where they are also tired of seeing that. So reminding us of the charter is great. We all should be following that. But we also need to hold ourselves to a little bit of a higher standard, me included. I've done said things that I'm not proud of and I've apologized to people several times. I just, I agree with that. We need to follow the charter even if we don't agree with the interpretation. It is what it is. That's what council agrees on. We have to move forward. Do I agree with every decision that's made? No. We all have to still get along. We have to move forward. We vote as a body. We vote as a, whatever the majority is, that's what we do and we move forward. But I agree that this is a conversation that needs to happen. So thank you for putting it on here.
Yes, I also like to mention, because it was mentioned earlier through a Citizens to Be Heard letter, that wasn't important for the forfeiture hearing, you know, to call to that. And to that point, what Mr. Hicks had mentioned, upholding the charter is very important. Noticing, I know it was mentioned before that others had noticed there was violations that were being made. I respect that the democratic process played out and it was voted for and we move on from here, right? And the thing is, it was kind of a red flag to say, because I think along the way, we've been kind of mentioning it and it was ignored. And throughout the whole process, you know, it was noted that, you know, council's losing their voice. The vote was being disregarded. It was kind of like a cry to say, can we stop this already? And can we come together and actually have discussions and not be, you know, broadsided or skipped over, ignored and really just have a collaborative body? And if the result of what happened last time gets us there, then absolutely, then I'm even, I'm grateful that we were able to get there so we can say, let's move on from here, you know. So I'm glad that Joel brought it up too. And that's, you know, protecting the freedom of speech of our residents writing into Citizens to Be Heard is important. Protecting the freedom of speech also of council members. But at the same time, as I also mentioned it six months ago, being one voice is also important. You know, and also on social media, being that one voice. Not singling out council members or even our commissions and our boards and being disparaging to them just as well. It's a matter of, it was noted last time, let's stop with those disparaging remarks, right? It goes from social media, goes into the real world. Can we move forward from this? I really do hope so. And that's what I hope that we can do.
Thank you. Anyone else? No comments from you fellows? All right, let's move, or I guess there's no vote on that, but it says action? Okay, all right. Next up is G, discussion action on city council employees evaluations. Timeline ahead of budget session, or season, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
Thank you, yes. So I wanted to bring this back because we discussed this late last fall, right before we were doing our employee evaluations that we were so behind on. So I wanted to go ahead and just bring that forward to say, here we are in May and I think we had discussed doing, we're heading into June, but that we were gonna bring it forward at least sometime in April to give the city, our city employees opportunities to get their staff evaluations in. That way we're prepared ahead of budget season. So what I wanted to do is give our city employees an opportunity, give them direction to say, can you, like, I'd like to move and give direction for city employees to prepare the evaluations that we can bring it up for discussion here soon ahead of budget season. I don't know what that timeline is that you would need if it's next council meeting or is it the first council meeting in June? But I would like to hear from city or city employees to see what that timeline would be.
So should we start an executive session? Because I know we wanted to do a three sixty view of those four positions. And what I meant by that is the four positions that council is responsible for. That's the city secretary, the city manager, the city attorney's office and the city judge. And so I know right now we're in a bit of a state of flux. I don't think we really have much of a review for you, Paul. I mean, no offense, but we've been here for a few meetings so far. So that's usually something we would do for a long-term city attorney that's been around for a while. And so, yeah, I think we should get that process started. And maybe we could kick it off in executive session at the next meeting. And then during the two meetings in June, we could move further on that as far as doing the evals. Does that make sense?
It makes sense. So let me be clear. I'm required to give you a three sixty performance review. It goes to the executive team and it goes to you. I don't need to say anything else. I'm the only one that does that. So I understand my process. I think council just needs to be clear on what you're expecting because in the four years I've been here, if I'm misspeaking, I'm misspeaking. I don't remember a review of the municipal judge. So I think council just needs to.
He just comes and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If we're doing a three sixty view on one position, wouldn't it be, you know, a little more fair to do a three sixty view on all four positions? Why single one person out? That doesn't make sense.
Well, does the city secretary wanna do the same thing that he does? I mean.
Did we ask him? I mean, I don't think so. I think we just did it, right?
No, I'm asking her. That's what he wanted.
Right, when, in my employment agreement, you required me to establish a process, so I brought back the best practice.
Okay, because that's what I'm saying. If we're gonna do it for one, we should do it for all four, to report to us. It doesn't make sense to single him out.
Well, we could do that, I mean.
Okay, so that's what we'll do. Anybody have any comments on that? Nothing, guys?
Just a question. Are we looking?
So the three sixty view is basically the same way we review Mr. Reed, where we have people from, you know, that report to him?
People under him that report on him.
The people that he's doing, reporting him. I don't report to them. I report to you guys.
So what we would do is we would have like the court folks just, you know, the same thing we do. Yeah.
Yeah, so Mr. Reed has an evaluation and the attorney had an evaluation of people who work directly with them.
So the directors always would report, you know, give a report on the attorney. Do all the directors work with the attorney?
Yeah, that was the first time we did it for the city attorney. It was the last, last year, yeah. But that's a good example.
I think it provides valuable input, especially with you abandoning us soon and retiring. I think it'd be a good idea to see like what kind of work do they depend on you for and that kind of thing.
I wanna ask.
Everything.
Because I understand what Ms. Stevens wants on this. Seems to me the key word is timeline. Maybe I'm wrong, but it looks like, and I like the idea, if that's what you're saying is, let's wrap up one of these people, say July first is a target to be done with one of them and another one is August first, another one, something like that. Kind of a cycle that we would get done before we get down to the budget crunching. Budget crunching's in August.
Yes.
I don't know if we have time to drag this out. I think we need to get it all done in June.
All done it together, yeah. Because we need to know what. Okay, but she's the one that put this on the agenda and I'm wanting to hear if that's what you have in mind is a timeline.
Right, so that we need to have these evaluations done ahead of us going into budget seasons that we already know in advance, you know, if there's gonna be any.
And so they're done simultaneously?
They can be. We've done that with the city manager and the city secretary simultaneously. And also, yeah, so it really didn't take.
I like it.
Yeah.
But we'd have to start right away.
Yes, that's what I was asking, to see how.
We gotta get cracking.
Prepared, how quickly prepared they can be with what we need to evaluate.
Okay. Do you need for a vote on this or are we in good?
Mr. Reed, what do you think? Would you have a vote or do we have an understanding?
If you could summarize what you're expecting, one thing I've not heard is the municipal judge, what kind of, what positions do you want feedback? I know he interacts closely with the municipal clerk, clerk staff and Ms. Simics. They work very closely with the police department, also code enforcement. So just give us some direction so that we can.
And the prosecutor, bailiff, you know, anybody he works with on a regular basis.
I've actually watched one of his courts the last month.
It's gonna be kind of hard with the judge, just because, yeah, because most of the time it would be with the police department. Doesn't interact with all the police officers. It would be more with.
Your bailiff.
Yeah, that's fine. The bailiff, the prosecutor, just the folks that he works with every day.
So I think because it's not a budget issue with the municipal judge, it's just an appointment. I think it would be fine to probably leave him off, to be honest with you, because this was really just getting ahead of the budget because in case if there's gonna be an incentive or some sort of a raise and so forth.
Does the judge usually get a pay raise?
We vote on him every two years or three years? And that's coming up though, isn't it? Because it seems like it's been a while.
Yeah.
We did ask to change the judge during the last charter review to the three-year term, just like the council was. And that was one of the things that was voted down by the citizens. They said, no, keep it two years.
Yeah, two years. Okay, so I think we got it coming up. So I think it makes sense to get some feedback on him. I mean, I know he's doing a great job. It's not, that's not where we're coming from. We just wanna make things consistent. Okay.
Okay, so I have bailiff, prosecutor, municipal court staff, city secretary. I said code enforcement earlier, but I'll look to Rick. Is it more you, Mr. Vasquez, versus a code enforcement officer? Okay. Did I capture the right scope there? Thank you.
All right, I think we're good on that one. All right, I think we're good on that one. Let's move on to item number H, or 12H, discussion, action on payment of public, I'm sorry, payment of public noticed board in front of City Hall. Councilwoman Sanchez Stevens.
Yes, I wanted to mention that there was a little bit of a timeline that I had noticed that, just for the sake of not damaging any public trust, I wanted to bring about that. D and D construction seems to receive, come in as the lowest bidder almost every single time. We've had many, many roads constructed. Most recently, we approved a street rehab package, right, in February, which was approved. And one thing that I kind of did, looking back, is that back in December, we opened up the bids from that street rehab package, number one. And then I recall there was an email in January where Mr. Reed had mentioned that we had received some responses in December regarding the bulletin board, because we had submitted for bids, one just came under 20,000, but then there was a donation amount. And I just wanted to, just for the erring on the side of caution, because it could have been, the timing of everything, I'm not sure if we received their donation bid at the same time that they also placed their bid in for our street package. So I was, I didn't have that timeline quite yet, but still, regardless whether it was before or after, even maybe it would have been legal completely, I just feel because of the surrounding timeframe, this could be perceived as a conflict. And I just kind of wanted to scale back and say, can we, can we pay for that? That way, there's no perceived impropriety or an appearance of impropriety, and see what they would like for that payment to be. You know, so I just wanted to say, because it, it just seems they come in as our lower bidder, and I don't want there to be some sort of semblance of, you know, I don't want to even say anything further than that, just to say, just kind of leave it at that and see if we can remit some payments, see what they would like for it.
So I think this is a question for our city attorney. Did we do anything wrong by accepting the gift?
Can I add some of the, I know that some of the work was done by our city staff also.
Mr. Reed, go ahead.
We, we may have thrown in the electric wiring, but no, we did none of the work on the-
I thought we did the masonry.
No, they did it all.
Okay.
So I, I just want to just put some facts on the record here. There is no collusion between the donation agreement for the bulletin board and our sealed competitive bid process. And Ms. Sanchez Stevens wasn't suggesting that. It's the appearance. Our procurement process for sealed competitive bids for projects over 1.5 million are sealed and competitive and in compliance with all state and local laws, period. And so I do not want anybody to think that a local business that's done business with the city since 2008 and has won awards and lost awards, or, or lost projects, meaning they were not awarded it. They, this particular company, D and D Contractors, is a civilo-based business. They employ about 120 employees, many of whom live in our city. And the donation, which was documented in my email, was through a donation agreement to avoid any appearance that it was just a favor to the city. It's a civilo business, he wanted to do something kind for the city. When we were asking multiple vendors for quotes, instead of giving us a dollar amount, he said, I want to donate it. So council can make the decision. If you want to make a motion, say, please request from D and D Contractors the cost for the bulletin board, and that passes, then I'll go ask the owner of D and D Contractors, give me an invoice, and we'll go pay for it. But I just want to note that it's a civilo-based business that wanted to do a donation. We documented that, I sent that in an email to you on January 14th.
So there was no favoritism whatsoever to awarding them bids because they bought us a sign, right?
You cannot draw a line between our competitive procurement process and that sign. And again, that wasn't implied here today. I'm making it absolutely clear, we drive competitive pricing. The other flip to this is, through our competitive pricing, we have saved millions of dollars for the city. So that's the way that we do procurement.
And, and I know Trump just accepted a new Air Force One from the, the country of Qatar, which I think is what, a $300 million plane.
I want to separate us, us from the federal government as well, so please, there's no relationship.
We're talking about a billboard, so.
Sure, no.
That, that being said, if there's a motion on the floor to, to request payment, and that passes, well, go ask the owner to give us an invoice, I will do that.
Okay.
I would certainly would like to make a motion for that, to see what they would be interested in, in charging us for that, simply because I also know that many times, whenever you are a part of a bidding process and you're also giving a donation, sometimes that could be perceived. Sometimes even there's companies to say, if I'm, if I'm bidding, I can't give you a donation. I've heard that happening just as well. So just to kind of take a step back, just for the, and I'm not saying that that happened, just would like to, you know, just keep public trust-
Sure.
And, and for the record-
And keep the, yeah, the honest working partnership that we have.
And for the record, there was no inappropriate acceptance of a donation by myself or on the behalf of the contractor. Let's just put that on the record.
Okay, very good. All right, so there's a motion on the floor to, to request the cost for the bulletin board, notice board, and then to potentially reimburse D and D? Is that, is that your motion, Norma?
It, it's not the cost per se, but, oh, go, go ahead, Donetta has some words.
I'd like to make a motion to request that our city manager go back to the contractor that provided that billboard for us and ask them what remittance they would like the city to provide for that billboard.
I second that. That's well said.
Okay, so, so, so no one seconded Norma's motion. Donetta made a motion and Norma seconded it, right? Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we can do it. I can't, I can't do it with-
Oh, okay. So we need a voice vote? Okay, we'll start with Councilman Hicks.
Aye.
Aye.
Naye. Four ayes, three nays.
I will request, per the motion from the contractor, what remittance, remittance they would accept from the city for the bulletin board. Thank you.
Okay. Next up is J, discussion on council directive policy for 2024-001 and 2020-001. Councilman Hicks.
Sorry. My bad. Okay, I'm sorry. Aye, discussion, action regarding the four marquee signs and alternate types of signage and cost. I thought this was the same one as the, the one we just talked about, that's why I looked over it, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, sorry. No, as y'all know, there's those four signs that are throughout the city that, one at the fire station, one right back here, behind the mech, Borgfeld, and I forget where the other one is. 1103, thank you. Well, I'm sure Mr. Huggins is tired of getting my email that these are blown over and nobody within the city is picking them up. I mean, and it just looks bad. Peggy pays for these signs out of the city secretary budget. I would just like to know, just know if council is willing to have us look at what the potential cost would be to have a more permanent sign placed in these areas, maybe a digital sign, something like what's in front of the noble group, you know, if the cost is not exorbitant. So I'm just looking, I'm just looking to see if council is willing to allow us to have staff look into this.
I think it's a good, oop, I think it's a good idea. The marquees came out because in like 2017, 2018, the city had a communication and technology advisory committee. And one of the, the purposes of that committee was we created a report, I guess, on different options. There was a lot of concern about the city's communication with the public and about public hearings, about the toll road, about lots of different things. And so those marquee signs were something that was recommended in that report that was implemented. Same with our communication staff person and a few other things that were implemented as a result of that. I know that those signs are paying to get updated, they do blow over. The, the sign at CVS was very, 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 very expensive, and we would also have to either get land donated or approval to build on land to put those signs in. I'm not opposed to it, but I know that it is going to be pretty costly.
Well, we could also ask for sponsors, per se, from different businesses that are within the city, within the city, you know, that can help with the cost of it. But, I mean, this would also help promote the events that are going on with the city.
No, absolutely.
It would, it would give another avenue, per se, for the information to go out to the public as well, other than just city council meetings every second and fourth Tuesday.
I think that also kind of feeds into something else that we have brought up before on council, is having like a consistent city look with our signs. We've talked about that before, where like Shirts has the big boulders with their signage for their city buildings and things like that. We have that Schaefer Business Park, is that what it was called?
Yes, and you also have that same design on-
Schneider.
Borgfeld Road with the direction-
I knew it was an S. Schneider Business Park had a really nice sign. We have our, our old schoolhouse that's red, we have our fire station three that's red, we have, like, the, the colors of our buildings don't really go together very well. Our signs are kind of all over the place, so I think if we're looking at these marquee signs, that may be something, like, more of an overarching thing that staff can look at, how, how to make everything look more cohesive. If we're going to drop a lot of money on these signs, we might want to have a little bit of consistency between them to make it like this is, I know that this is a city sign because it looks like all the other city signs.
Mm-hmm.
I kind of like those signs, personally. Whenever I see one blown over, all I got to do is call Peggy. Peggy calls the guy that puts them up, he goes out there and fixes it. I, let me finish, you got your chance to talk, but this is, everybody wants to keep this, oh, the small-town civilo, small-town civilo, that's small-town right there putting those kind, kind of marquees up. So that's what I like about them. Not only that, they catch your attention. You drive by CVS, it's so small, you can't read what, what it's saying. You drive by Fire Station Number Two, you drive by, you can't really see what it's saying. Those are big, bright, you drive by, you see it because they're bright yellow, orange, and pink. And, and I like them because they're there. I'm sorry that you don't like them, you don't care for them, I, I don't mind them. My, my thing is, all you got to do is call Peggy. For many years, I've called Peggy to tell-
So, so maybe we could weight them down a little bit better so they don't flip over? I don't know if there, if there's some weights that they can put on the base to keep them grounded?
We already, we already started working on that, Mary. We've already done that.
Already done that.
Anchoring them down and putting more weights on them.
But I think in the last, what, two months, I've sent him four or five emails, hey, they're blown over. Why is nobody in our city looking at, I mean, Public Works is driving up and down. Trust me, I've already talked to Public Works.
You need to contact the right person. It's called-
Well, he gets staff on it, but-
Well, he's getting staff on it, too, the property of the person that owns it.
Right. So do we want to take a, do we want to make a motion on this, or?
I would also like to add real quick, these poor marquee signs, right? They're, they're very retro, and they get a lot of criticism on social media, too. But you know what? They're so effective. They're so effective. I have to say, people know exactly when Shred Day is going to happen, you can see them from like, shoot, you know, quarter mile away. And then to Joel's point, you know, when I'm at CVS at the stop sign, that's a time where I, I'm not going, you know, 20 or 30 miles an hour, and I can actually read slowly with, with going across the, the digital marquee. So to a certain extent, the digital marquees are effective, you're kind of at a standstill, but these other signs, to your point, too, if we're always saying that we want to capture the small-town feel, like, that is a small-time feel. I love that our kids know what those are, and the fact that they know the word marquee and where it kind of came from. So I think it's, I think it's cool, actually, so I would love to continue to see them. I'd love to have them weighted down. I got to meet someone who was changing out the signs, the, and so that was really cool that, that they still exist, right? So anyway, I think it's great, I think it's cost-effective, and they do what they're supposed to do. They get the word out.
Thank you. I kind of like them, too. I mean, they've kind of grown on me. Anyone else? Molly, Randy, Jeff, what do y'all think?
I'll say, I don't like them much. They, like, 1960s to me. When I, when I moved here several years ago from a larger city, I kept seeing them thinking, oh my gosh, when are they going to replace those? They look like they've been around for 40 years. Maybe I'm wrong. And, and this, you know, I, I didn't live here before then, and so with all that small-town nostalgia that some of y'all feel that you want to hang on to, more power to you if that's what you want. But I think the city is evolving and we need to get more modern. I don't see those kind of signs anywhere else.
Bill Mary.
New Braunfels also has them. Yep, they're, they're out there.
That's the saddest thing, I guess. Kind of grew on me, too.
The other one, you think, um, a lot of them, a lot of them-
How about you guys, Randy, Jeff? Y'all like them or no?
I, I don't think there's any harm in exploring. I mean, I, I know that when the cost comes out, we probably don't have the money for it. You know, one of the things I've talked to Mr. Reed about in our meetings is looking at city branding, right? It's, yeah, you can go either way on the marquee, whether it's an old-town feel, whether it's staying behind the times, whatever. But we need, overall, to look at branding for the city. What are we doing to show that we are a city of quality to attract these businesses that we keep talking, that we want here? I don't think it's solved with new signs, but I think exploring ways to better market the city through different avenues is the way of the future.
No vote on this one? No vote? Okay, just wanted to talk about it. Okay, all right. J, discussion on council directive policy 2024-001 and 2020-001. Is this the one that you wanted to have the new subcommittee look at?
Well, I do, but my discussion on this, and if the attorney can help me out on this, we can't have policy directives that trump our charter. And there's several things in the policy directive that trumps our charter.
Yeah, those are all from it.
I understand, but I'm just saying, you know, people keep using them. You used it on not me being able to discuss that other one, but it trumped our charter. And that's why I brought up, we've got to make sure, you know, these policy directive, that's why I'd love to take and dive into that and-
So, yeah, so let's have the subcommittee look at it, and then the things that do trump the charter, just remove them.
Okay.
Okay.
I just, that, that's, what I wanted to get across is, we can't be having items in our policy directive that trump what the charter has to say.
Makes sense, okay. K, discussion on-
That's all right.
Oh, go ahead.
My comment would be, it's, they're not void, but they're voidable. So they need to be reviewed, and they may be used. They're not automatically void, but they certainly, if they are reviewed and they seem to contradict or trump the charter, then they need to be voided.
Okay. And that's something that that subcommittee can look at, and then make a, make a recommendation to void them.
Mr. Wenland, is that done by motion to void them? Like, we have to put them on the agenda as a subcommittee?
I certainly would recommend that, yes. Their council action would, would do the trick best.
Because that's how they were created originally, back in 2020 or whenever this was. I mean, I think they even go back before that. What, what, they first came out in 2015 or something like that? Yeah, so they've been around for like 10 years.
That's all the discussion I wanted to have.
All right. Okay, so the, so the subcommittee will look at it. All right, next up is K, discussion on council meeting staff and vendor presentations, Councilman Hicks.
Well, bring this up, because I've, I've talked to Mr. Reed about it. You know, whether we, sometimes we get in here and we've got a- Well, bring this up because I've, I've talked to Mr. Reed about it. You know, whether we, sometimes we get in here and we've got a presenter that presents for fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes. We could try and have them cut that down. Or even if they wanted to do a, a video and put it on YouTube for us to watch prior to the meeting. It's where, a lot of times when they, they do that, they bring it, we, it's dropped in our lap. And then we don't have time to discuss. I mean, we got time now, but I don't want to be here till midnight.
No, and, and that's something that I know a lot of us, or at least I've said plenty of times, is try to keep the presentations to five slides. Just pick the, pick the five most important things and give that to us.
Right. And that's, that's, that's my whole point is, you know, and I've talked to Mr. Reed about it, is we've got to do something to where we're not in here, but we have time for us to discuss the agenda item. And then, because all we're getting is all this information that we already had for a week.
Yeah.
Well, at least from Wednesday to, to Tuesday. Well, Wednesday to Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah. It's stuff that's in our packet, we don't. But, but, but if there is important information that the, that the citizens need to know, that's why I'm thinking. You, you can put that information into five slides that, that the citizens, you know.
To make it shorter.
Because all they really need is the bottom line. They don't need to know how the sausage is made. They just need to know, this is the new price of sausage.
Correct. That's my.
Katie?
So, I've been keeping time of how long different agenda items take. And it seems like most presentations are about fifteen minutes. That's fine. We do have outliers. There was one, the trash contract guy, that was ninety-eight minutes or something crazy. So I think that limiting that is important. But I do understand the importance of if we have a vendor, someone come in from out of town, we don't want to say, sorry, you have fifteen minutes. You drove four hours to be here, you have to drive four hours back. One thing that the city, one thing that the city of San Antonio does and some other cities do is they have a separate session specific for presentations like that. In San Antonio, it's called B Session. And so if there's a presentation that may have a lot of question and answers or back and forth, then there's a special meeting. They, they meet B Session every week. We do not need to do that. But I think if you do a B Session once every other month where we have those bigger presentations come through and that's, we might have two or three presentations, but it gives us the time to ask those questions. We can plan it a little bit better and then make these meetings a little bit more snappy. Because no presenter, we've had times where presenters have been here, we didn't know they were here for a presentation. They're sitting in the audience until eleven o'clock. They get up, do their fifteen minute presentation, and they leave. So, that's just a, an idea of something that maybe we could look at. I also wanted to still value staff's time because that, adding another meeting is adding another night that y'all have to be here. But I'm, I'm thinking that maybe if we're strategic about it, we can be a little bit faster. But fifteen minutes is doable. Based on all of my times that I've kept the last four or five meetings, most presentations are between seven and fifteen minutes. They just need to be a little bit shorter. But those, those bigger presentations that we anticipate a lot of questions on, it may be an idea to have a separate meeting just for a couple of those.
So, you know, to piggyback on that, Katie, you know, just an idea, the B Session could potentially be from, you know, let's just say five PM to six PM or six fifteen or something like that and have it right here in council chambers. So that way, if a council member feels that they need to attend a B Session and, and, and watch a speech or, or watch a, a, no, a fifteen minute PowerPoint and ask questions, then they, they can optionally attend if they want to. However, if a council member, you know, looked at their packet, they said, I got it. You know, I've, I've, I've read through this and I'm good. I don't need to show up for this B Session. It would be optional. So maybe that's something that we could do? As far as how to format it?
If I, if I could chime in?
Please.
If it becomes optional, I think quorum would become a, a problem for us to be able to even do a workshop. I'm used to these types of workshops being like a four to six, thirty minute break. Food is served, council is able to get refreshed with some food. Six thirty, you pick right back up and you do your regular meeting. But there's no hard and fast rule of how you schedule these. You could do what you said, Mayor, you could start the workshop, I call it a workshop, from five to six thirty. Take a thirty minute break, start your regular meeting at seven. So, I like the idea of doing those longer presentations in a workshop and then actually have the action either the same evening or two weeks later. It doesn't have to be the same evening. Something worth exploring with this council. You don't have to make that decision tonight, but it would be very helpful.
If people think about it, that, that, I just want to, I brought it to you.
Does, does, does that cover what you're looking for, Joel?
Yeah.
On the end of them.
We can figure out something and come to a conclusion.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Onto L, discussion from council members that have attended seminars, events, or meetings. We'll start with Councilman Hicks.
We going back four months here?
No.
I'm joking.
No, no, no. This month. What have you done in May? Let's talk about May.
I do, if you talk about this month, I had A MPO on Friday all day. Talked about traffic mitigation, congestion. Then we went to freight study and then I had the regular MPO. I was over there all day long. They're still looking to replace or, or figure out who's going to take over Sid Martinez's job. Hopefully Sonia will get it, but they're, they're looking outward. This morning, I had Commissioners Court, after Commissioners Court. Went to Memorial Service for Seguin and, and the county got together kind of like we did last night with Shirts. And the county, the county did it with Seguin. So, last night's memorial was great. Thank the police for doing that. And then today, it was, it was awesome, so.
Thank you, Joel. Donetta, anything to add?
The only thing that I've been to is CRWA, which's Canyon Regional Water Authority. Just, I'm still just trying to learn that. Going to be setting up some meetings, going to construction meetings and whatnot for them. That's it.
Thank you, Donetta. And, and, and moving forward, I guess after the CRWAs, you'll give us like a little bit of a recap of how those meetings went? I mean, I, I don't, you know.
Yeah, this was my first meeting where I got installed, so, yeah. Once I get a little further into it, I'll.
When you get your feet wet?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Nora?
Yes, so, let's see. Had a chance to tour the Children's Advocacy Center, Guadalupe County. So that was really cool getting to see that. I hadn't been, been out there to see that before. So, really excited about their purse bingo coming up this Thursday just as well, just to support what they do. Sad statistic that we're at like nine hundred and three cases. Fifty-one percent of those are sexual abuse. And that's in our county. And so, their, their need for resources is there. So, anyway, so I just, it was just eye opening. I got to hear them also speak at the Blue Ribbon Breakfast just as well. Got to see Sheriff Frey also give some statistics on Guadalupe County just as well. And how they are just really, you know, enforcing the law and catching these, you know, these individuals who are preying over children just as well. So, I applaud their efforts and all that they're doing for our county just as well. And also was able to go to the Capital for Mental Health Advocacy with our NAMI Guadalupe group just as well. There are several mental health bills that I think are very important. Especially when you have family members, when you have like seventeen year olds transitioning into eighteen year olds and the family itself is no longer included in those mental health decisions. So I think it's important and to, to just advocate for families. And that way they can further help support their, their children through mental health just as well. Also, just alarming rates that, you know, suicide is the second leading cause of death among ten to fourteen year olds. So, mental health, our state is lagging behind when it comes to mental health. And I think it's important to, to go to, to just email your state legislators and, and really advocate for a lot of these mental health bills. And especially the crisis line. We need to have that fully funded. Also, a big thing that, I, I went to a TML Leadership Academy. And I wanted to go ahead and draft up, it's been a while, Katie, since I did a little write-up thing. And that one, I think, was very insightful, very, they had a personality test thing. And I'm sure y'all have done these things, right, in your workplaces? I felt that this coming year, we have an election year, and then there's going to be about a two-year pause, right, in our elections. And this new coming in council, I think it's important for us to consider, and I talked to Mr. Reed about this, I think he had proposed that, he mentioned before. I think it's important to take a, a personality profile among council members. So we understand the stressors, you know, the, the conversations. If we understand that a little bit better, then we can understand where we're coming from. And I think a lot of times, you know, coming onto the dience, you have a lot of misconceptions and negative perceptions of other people without even giving them a fair opportunity to get to know them. So we could actually have collaborative, honest, and open dialogue with a lot of, without a lot of negative biases. And so this really, just at my table, getting to see and understand everybody else's personality profiles, it helped me understand where they were coming from. And then it was no longer hearing anything negatively. It was like, oh, I understand that because they're this type of personality and this is what is important to them. You know, maybe they're more of a, you, you know, a, a social person, you know, more upbeat. Or maybe you have the dominant one. And so then you don't take those as personality flaws per se, but you look to them to say, these are the strengths and these are the things, you know, the, not, I don't want to say the weaknesses, but the, the, the things that could stress them out. So I found that very beneficial. So obviously, I think we are lacking better understanding of, of one another here. And I think that is something that we should look forward to even like on budget season to say, would we like to invest in the next budget cycle into some personality testing for our new council coming in so that we can have a better cohesive and better collaborative council? Because like I said earlier.
We did that, actually. Remember that, Joel? We did that a few years ago.
So, and being that this next council is going to be in place for the next two years, I think it'd be worth.
Been a while. But, yeah, we've, we've looked at that before. We've done that.
Yeah. So that, that is a huge takeaway among other things that I, I gained from that particular leadership academy. I didn't intend on going. I heard many good things about it. And just through a, a lot of the stuff that we've been going through, I kind of felt like, you know, we haven't all arrived. There's always something that we can learn and how to do better and how to be better. And this was just one aspect that I just wanted to, you know, to extend gratitude and appreciation for the opportunity to have it, to have gone to this leadership course and, and for that investment. So, just wanted to.
Thank you, Nora. Katie?
I went to the SEUC ISD Town Hall that they had last week. They were talking about the, what's going on at the Texas House and the Texas Senate. There are several bills that were not moving at all that had to do with education. And they do impact us as a city a little bit. The only bill at that time that had been passed by both the House and the Senate was the voucher. Shocking. But the teacher pay increase one was not passed. The, the increasing, the standard allotment for students has not passed. The increasing the costs that the schools get paid through the state for security, which directly impacts us, did not pass. So there's a lot that are still paused. They have until, I think, this Thursday to get things moving. And if those bills do not get moving through the Senate or the House or wherever they're stalled, then they will not pass. And then they are out of session at the end of May and they do not meet again for another.
Two years.
Two years. So, unless a special session is called. And knowing how things are right now, I don't think a special session would be called to help public schools. So, the, yeah, it was not great. So, the district was encouraging people to call our representatives, call any representative and ask them to please, please, please push these school funding bills. The one with security, we do provide the school resource officers. The school district reiterated their commitment to having that contract period. They want to keep the kids safe. That's part of their, their highest standard was to keep kids safe and to maintain these contracts. So even if the, the state does not increase the allotment that they get for security, they still want to maintain that contract. So that was nice to hear. But I think that it was really nice that the school district did that and kind of explained in English what's going on at the state level. And I think that next time there is a legislative session, that may be something that we want to explore. Like, what are the, the things that are being proposed that affect us as a city? And how can we encourage our citizens to participate and call their representatives? And specifically talk about bills that could help us. We had that one with the ETJ. The issues that we're having with ETJ are how our hands are tied. We had the, the expanding the, what is it called? The repayment if you live, if you have a city close to a base.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That one was one that kind of stalled out. So I think that if we, in the future, could kind of figure out ways to better direct the community to advocate for our city as a whole. I went to, Saddle Creek Ranch is a very active HOA. They had the tax assessor come out, the Guadalupe County Tax Assessor. You have until the fifteenth to file your, your.
Appeal.
Appeal. So if you haven't yet, please do that. If you can't file online, then you have to go into the office. If you did not get a notice, he said that if your, if your amount did not change more than a dollar or something like that, or one percent, then they don't send out a notice to you. So, a lot of people are not getting notices and that's fine. You may not get a notice.
Some went down. I heard a lot of them gone down this year.
So, if you have had foundation work or any plumbing work or anything like that, you may be able to decrease your property tax bill as well. So that was interesting. Saddle Creek Ranch also had a neighborhood meeting with staff. I just attended, I got there late, like, they were already done with all the work. But Mr. Otto was there, Julio was there, Mr. Reed was there. There were several people there at that meeting. They've been having issues with the developer who's building the newer sections. I think this is kind of common with all of our, the neighborhoods that we have where there's still development happening. But that was a really productive meeting. And I'd recommend that if you have people reaching out to you about neighborhoods in your district that are struggling with the developer, to reach out to Mr. Reed and see if you can arrange one of those meetings. Because I, I can tell from the feedback that I'm seeing online and the discussions that are, are being had within that neighborhood, they feel like we were heard, the city's doing something about it, we have some progress moving forward. So, those were kind of, oh, and Siblo Summer Nights, that was really fun. I got to take one of my neighbor kids. My kids are too cool and too old for Touch a Truck, but we took my four-year-old neighbor and he loved it. They had little plastic construction hats and little construction vests. He put on that hat and the sunglasses and he turned into a construction man. He was not Jaden anymore, he was construction man. And he wanted to go back on all the trucks. Our staff was fantastic with the kids. It was really great. So thank you to everyone who put that on. I know that was a big undertaking.
Thank you, Katie. Councilman Mahoney? Randy?
I just, unfortunately, I didn't get to go to Touch a Truck. I was, I already had plans. Had, would have worked great had it not rained the week before, but we don't cancel rain for that, so. Just, the staff worked really hard. Mr. Reed conveyed to me, it, it was a great success. I was hoping Mr. Hines would still be here, but he went ahead and left. He, he was instrumental in reaching out to Walmart to get the truck up there. And it's just a great event for, for young kids to come, come and look at. I don't know how many private entities we had, but maybe, I'm just thinking if we could look at a recognition for them at a council meeting, maybe a, a little plaque or something. I, I think that would go a long way on our relationships with our, with our businesses, because.
For the manager of Walmart?
Yeah. Quite certainly Walmart is probably our, our major contributor to our tax base and everything here, so.
That's right. Robert.
Yeah, the G Club, the Guadalupe County.
Whoever owns that big crane, maybe there's a kind of a thank you letter or something.
Yeah, Mayor Crane, whoever was here, but.
Good idea.
Yep.
Jeff, anything?
Well, I spent most of the last month doing all things Fiesta, which was interesting because I've lived here for, well, coming up on year six. I never attended anything Fiesta, so that was fun. We even hosted a reception at work. As far as Siblo Summer Nights, just want to echo again my thanks to staff putting that on. My daughter's also too cool for school. But I drug her anyways because the vendors were there and I reminded her that Mother's Day was that Sunday, so it all worked out.
Mayor, I would like to add that there's a lot of bills that are passing that aren't friendly to our city.
Yeah.
Or any of the cities.
So, we, we, we should probably get with TML to get a legislative update. Paul, can you handle that for us?
I'll, I'll let you know. We're supposed to have a, there's a TML legislative update June seventeenth through twenty-seventh. There's going to be one up in Round Rock that I'm planning on going to.
Yeah.
To get the, like me and you and, and Allison went to that one.
Yep. Yeah, I'm, I'm interested in hearing that too. I'll go.
Well, let Peggy know ahead of time because she's in.
Yep.
It's the end of June.
Okay.
Or the middle of June.
Perfect.
There's a lot of bills that are passing that aren't good.
I've got note that on the fifteenth, this Thursday, if one of those TML webinar's, is that possibly about legislative?
No.
Because it's not over yet. So they usually wait until it's done and then they give you the wrap up.
The, the last legislative update one that we had was May first. We had four sessions and May first was the last one. The, the very last one will be the up, the, the wrap up, which will be up in person. the wrap-up, which will be up in person. That one's just probably another TML, some type of TML, but it's not the legislative.
All right. Let's move on to the next item, which is M, discussion on items the city council would like to see on future agendas. Do you want to just email them to Peggy, or do we want to roll call out?
I will email you as well, but, um, I've already let you know last night, um, we'll honor our military, our, our students going into the military. I've already reached out and sorted that process.
Yeah, I went to an event on that the other day, Joel. I think it was last Friday over there at Steel. And so, they were doing, um, signing day for the ones that are joining the Army and the Air Force and whatnot. And so, I think they'll be, those probably the same kids. There was maybe about ten, ten to twelve of them, I think?
I also, I know Peggy, you had on the calendar about Flag Day. If flag, about Flag Day, uh, being on June thirteenth, and being that June fourteenth is, um, also, um... The two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Army Armed Forces. I wasn't sure if we could do a collaborative effort on, uh, Flag Day just as well, or if maybe we wanted to do the second meeting in June as a, you know, a ceremony here within council to do a cake ceremony, maybe invite the public veterans, Army, uh, military to come and join us to celebrate for just a moment the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the Army. E- either way, I'd love to get your feedback to see if maybe that's something we can do and honor them for in our city.
Anyone else have any items, or you just want to mail them, email them to Peggy? Email? Okay. All right. Kay, Peggy, next up, um, your item in discussion action on the review and confirmation of all upcoming special meetings and workshops, and scheduling the time, date, and place of additional special meetings or workshops. Peggy Simmons.
If you have your calendars in your packet, and I don't have any changes to add to it right now.
As far as our calendar to, to...
If there's any changes, I will make sure that you get a hold of them.
Okay. Just look on the website, then. Peggy?
The link you get, like...
Yes. You have them in your packet, the two calendars. There's no changes to them right now.
And Ms. Simmons?
Thank you. All right. Next up is, um, oh, discussion action and authorizing for the city manager to execute a non-exclusive license agreement granting YM Cibolo LLC, a license to construct a subdivision monument sign for the Bella Rose Subdivision, Unit Three, in the R O W. Mr. Vazquez?
Mayor, unless y'all have any questions, uh, we recommend approval.
Okay. It's a, uh, it's free, right? It's, it's free, right?
Yes.
So, Bella Rose is going to put a monument sign up over there in the right-of-way. It won't cost us any money. It'll just make the, the area look nicer. Do we want to accept it?
It's not for the city, so it's for the Bella Rosa Unit...
Yeah.
Three subdivision.
Through the neighborhood.
Right, because it's in our right-of-way. They need a license agreement.
Okay.
And they'll take care of the maintenance, correct?
Correct.
I can go over the terms quickly. If the council asks questions, take one, thirty seconds. Terms, ten years. Landscaping, zero escape is required. They have to have an HOA take over the maintenance and operation. The city is indemnified, and they have to carry an insurance policy for, uh, one million dollars of coverage per occurrence.
Somebody want to make a motion on that?
Actually, Mayor, I would like to table that, if that's okay, simply because I did not, uh, have an opportunity to view that. If that wasn't a separate e-mail, uh, I scrolled through all my emails, but I, I didn't see that one. So, I would like to table that one, just to have an opportunity to review it.
Are there any...
I don't know how many documents there were.
Okay.
Or was I just, was it just the memorandum?
No, that was, that was the one that was added to the agenda, where you had an amended agenda. So, when I sent the amended agenda, there was an attachment to it that had that item.
Is there a timeline by which we must accept this, or are we okay to table it?
You're fine to table it.
It's thirty-seven pages, yeah.
All right. So, there's a motion to table on the floors or a second? Okay. Uh, all in favor? Or do you want to vote on your screens? Okay. Let's just vote on our screens, then. Okay. Motion carries...
Oh, Joel.
Five, let's see, five to two. Okay. All right. Um, the last item on our agenda is fifteen. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? We are adjourned. Thank you. It's before midnight. It's only eleven forty-five.